Good evening. I'd like to call the meeting to order of the Elk Grove Unified School District Board of Education. We did meet in closed session and we took action to appoint Zanthi Pinkerton, Director of Communications for our school district. I would like to announce that tonight's meeting is being video recorded and will be available on the district's YouTube channel. There are blue cards available just outside of the boardroom. If anyone wishes to address the board, please complete it and hand it to a staff member on my right and indicate whether you wish to speak to matter on the agenda or not on the agenda. If it is on the agenda, we'll assume that's when you want to speak, or if not, it will be at the public comment time. We start our meetings by recognizing a special person that has volunteered in our school district to lead us in the pledge. But before we do that, I would just like to take a moment to mention the loss of one of our community members who was a hero in our school district and our community at large, who passed away in the last couple of days, and that was Toby Johnson, who our Toby Johnson Middle School is named after. And I believe, according to our historian, Elizabeth Pinkerton, he was 96 years old, and he was just an amazing person and an incredible person in our educational community, and then he was on the Board of Supervisors for many years, so in our community at large. So as a board, we wish sympathy to his wife Sue and his family members. And it's fitting that tonight, our pledge is being led by someone that is from a school in the area that he resided near, and that's Franklin Elementary School. So I'm going to let Ms. Singh Allen introduce the family from that elementary school to lead us in the pledge.
Great, thank you, President Cox. I'd like to call up the Duarte family. Great. Thank you. So I'm going to read some wonderful things about you and your family. Facing us is great. Franklin Elementary has a long history of educating students for 159 years. The Duarte family has been a part of Franklin community, owning and operating a dairy for over 40 years. In 1958, Tony, Mary, and their two sons, John and Tony, moved to Elk Grove from Turlock. I'm from Turlock, by the way. In 1966, the Duarte family leased and later purchased their dairy on Bruceville Road. They began their dairy business with 64 cows. Justin Senior attended Franklin Elementary along with his brothers and sisters. His mother was the organizing force behind the annual lasagna feed, which raised funds to purchase items for the school. In 1972, Tony married his wife, Antoinette F. Louise. Tony and Antoinette had three children, Justin, Tony, and Regina. All three of the children attended Franklin Elementary from 1978 to 1991 and went on to attend Joseph Kerr Middle School and Elk Grove High School. Antoinette served on the Franklin Elementary Parent Group. She assisted in fundraising by selling lasagna dinners to earn money to build the multipurpose room and the baseball diamond backstop. Justin graduated from Elk Grove High School in 1991 and attended Modesto Junior College for two years. He would have come home on weekends to help out on the dairy. At 22 years old, he decided not to go on to Cal Poly and moved back home to help run the family business. He met his wife, Goretty, at a Portuguese festival and brought her to the Franklin community. They have three children, Justin in the fifth grade, Jacob in the third grade, and Shelby in kindergarten. All three students are fine examples of Franklin pioneers, respectful, responsible, trustworthy, and caring. Goretty has been an organizing force in the Franklin PTA. This is her fourth year on the PTA Board, where she has chaired the annual Harvest Festival, which is likened to a small county fair attracting hundreds of children, families, and community members. She also coordinates and oversees the winter family fun night, pasta for purpose, movie nights, bingo, past presidents' luncheon, and aloha barbecue. In addition to fundraising efforts, the Franklin Elementary PTA has provided the school with many opportunities for families to connect and support each other in building long-lasting friendships. The Duartes family will continue as part of the Franklin Elementary until 2020, when their daughter Shelby promotes to the sixth grade. Antoinette, Justin, Goretty continue to work their dairy located at 11807 Bruceville Road by milking 530 cows and farming 160 acres. They plan to remain a part of the Franklin community for many years to come. Let's give a round of applause to the Duarte family. Please stand.
They're standing.
Salute and pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you like to say a few words? I'll be right down to present you with a token of our appreciation.
The principal of Franklin Elementary here tonight? Oh, come on down. Thank you for all your service, your family, and your long history of involvement in our community. Also, before we go on to the next item on the agenda, I would like to introduce another special person here tonight, and hopefully for many nights, our new superintendent, Mr. Chris Hoffman. It's his first time up here as superintendent, but he's well-known throughout our community. He was a student in our school district, he's a parent of two fine young men in our school district, he's been a teacher in our district, administrator in our district, and he has a long history of leadership in the educational community. And he was recently superintendent in El Dorado Union High School District. So we're just delighted to have him join us. Yesterday was his first day, so we are thrilled. Be kind, we want to keep him, so we're here. But thank you very much, we're honored to have you with us.
At this time, I'd like to take the floor from President Cox. Let me start by saying that this is the last meeting for two of our most well-respected and senior board members. And on behalf of the Board, I certainly want to acknowledge your retirement and at the same time, acknowledge your leadership, President Cox. It has been my honor and privilege to view you as a constituent and then as a colleague, and to serve as your clerk this year. It brings me much sadness that you will be departing, but the heartwarming part is I know that you will have more time to volunteer in our schools now. And so on behalf of the Board of Education, on behalf of this school district, we'd like to present you a ceremonial gavel. Inscribed here is President Priscilla Cox for this last school year.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. I appreciate your comments, too.
If I can say just a few things, I would just like to mention, it's just been an extreme pleasure for me to work alongside a real class lady here for 14 years that I also have learned a lot from. You're talking about a person that knows the governance of school boards. She has worked tirelessly for 20 years with students, with parents, teachers, and staff. She really knows this district in and out, and I'm really, truly going to miss her not being up here, seeing her face. So I really appreciate that. As well as Ms. Emma Visca, again, 14 years, seeing the Dr. Seuss readings every year in her cap, and not to see her out there, it's going to be strange a little bit. Jeanette? Well, good, we need you for that, too. And it's certainly been a pleasure, too, being, working with you as well, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Chad, and thank you very much. I think I'm reserving some comments for a little later in the meeting, but thank you very, very much.
Well, I'd like to say a few things. Since we started the trend, I thought it would be later. Well, let me just say that it's been a true honor and privilege serving the last two and a half years with both of you. I can honestly say that you have served this district with true honor and integrity and have always put the children first. And you've done that without regard for your own time and what it means to put in all of those hours. It's been a sacrifice, I know, for your families, and it's just, I've learned a lot from both of you, and I just want to thank you and good luck on your next journey.
Well, thank you very much, and I appreciate all that. As I said, I'll reserve my comments for a little later, but I really appreciate all the kind comments. And now we get to hear from our high school students, which is always a favorite part, to share what's going on at Kasumnas Oaks, Monterey Trail, and Valley High Schools. And I'll start with Kasumnas Oaks and their ambassador jackets and hear about what's been going on there.
Good evening, President Cox, members of the Board, Superintendent Hoffman, and Ms. Hein. It is our pleasure to be here tonight, reporting to you as Kasumnas Oaks High School's Board Representatives. My name is Brooke McNeil.
And my name is Bailey Coben.
And it's an honor to be here. At Kasumnas Oaks, we want to celebrate our academics. Students took over 850 advanced placement tests last spring, the most in school history. Some of our highlights of the last year's AP tests included a 100% pass rate on our Spanish language and composition test, and an overall score of 3.8 on the macroeconomics test. Many students had the opportunity to take the preliminary SAT in October. For the first time this year, all sophomores received the test for free. This was very beneficial to see the format of the test questions for when students take the actual test. A new program we are starting at Kasumnas Oaks is called Parent University. The purpose is to explain the course selection process for sophomore through senior year. It will also show how the course selection process is directly linked to a student's post-secondary options. We will also provide an overview of the honors and AP program and our specialized pathway program options. This event targets current ninth-grade students and their parents before making their sophomore course selections. After school, students participate in a variety of exciting fall sports. On Friday, November 14th, the Wolf Pack football team hosted Monterey Trails High School for the first round of the Division I playoffs. Unfortunately, the Wolf Pack faced an emotional 28-29 loss, but we congratulate their team on their 8-3 overall record, as well as being undefeated in their league. Our varsity soccer team won their division for the second year in a row. They hosted Merced High School for the first round of playoffs on Wednesday, November 12th, but unfortunately came up short of a win. Congratulations to all of our fall sports athletes for the hard work.
Tonight, November 18th, will host our annual talent show, PACC Savvy. Many students have auditioned, and we have selected about 10 outstanding acts. It should be a great night. On Tuesday, September 30th, Kasumnas Oaks hosted Interleague. Activities directors and leadership students from as far as Lowdi, Colfax, and Nevada City came together and shared ideas about their school's leadership put-on events. Interleague was very beneficial because every school was able to take home a few new ideas which will help them to improve and even add new events at their schools. Friday, October 3rd, held our first food fair. Several of our clubs participated by selling food items such as Cinnabon, Del Taco, and Boba Tea drinks to help raise money for their club. With our next food fair quickly approaching, we hope to have an even bigger turnout. Now for some senior events. On Saturday, October 11th, Kasumnas Oaks seniors went to Fright Fest at Six Flags Discovery Kingdom. Our seniors had a blast going on rides and in haunted houses. The following week, Thursday, October 16th, was the senior picnic. After first period, seniors went out to the field and played games, listened to music, and had a catered lunch together. CO seniors can't wait for the senior surprise, which is to be held on December 12th. Back-to-school night was on Tuesday, October 14th. Wolf Pack parents and students enjoyed visiting classrooms and meeting with new Term II teachers. Unity Day, which is CO's version of breaking down the walls, was held on Friday, October 24th. About 80 students from different backgrounds, ethnicities, beliefs, and life experiences were able to come together and realize how similar they are to one another. The day consisted of several large and small group icebreakers and activities that helped the Wolf Pack get to know each other. Overall, Unity Day was a huge success and really unified the CO family. Students can't wait for the next Unity Day, which will be held on Wednesday, February 11th. Thursday, October 30th, held this year's Fall Blood Drive. We broke our goal and donated 115 pints of blood. We look forward for the next blood drive in February and hope to donate even more blood. On Saturday, November 1st, CO hosted the annual Dance Fest. Elk Grove dance programs, including our very own Hype Dance Company, performed with the theme of "The Periodic Table of Elements." It was very interesting to see how each dance team interpreted this theme. As a member of Hype, I can personally say that it was fun meeting dancers from different schools and performing, of course. It was a full house, and all the proceeds went to the charity of spreading awareness for mitochondrial disease. Wolf Pack Theater presented the fall play, "The Servant of Two Masters," on November 7th through 15th. All of these actors put in a lot of time and effort, and all of their hard work paid off in the end. CO looks forward to our spring musical, "Beauty and the Beast." Needless to say that the Wolf Pack has been very busy with activities and events, and we are very excited for another great year together. Thank you so much for your time, and we look forward to reporting to you as Kasumnas Oaks High School's Board Representatives again on February 3rd.
Thank you, excellent report, very professional. Next, we'll hear from Monterey Trail.
Good evening, Board President Priscilla Cox, Superintendent Mr. Christopher Hoffman, Secretary Arlene Hein, and members of the Board. My name is Christina Lee, and I am the ASB President at Monterey Trail High School.
And I am Kelsey Cole, ASB Vice President.
On August 25th, Monterey Trail held Back-to-School Night, an event that allowed parents and family members to be introduced to their children's current classes and teachers. Monterey Trail's academics continued to excel. Students who received a 3.75 or higher in perfect attendance for Terms III and IV of the last school year were recognized at our Fall Awards Night on October 6th. 379 students were invited to celebrate their academic success. Our renaissance is taking place on November 18th through November 20th, where students who received a 3.0 and above will be rewarded with prizes such as candy and school supplies. Over 1,200 students were invited to participate in this occasion. Parents have also been given the opportunity to be more involved in their children's learning. Through a program called Mustang Connection, a genuine partnership between home and school is created through monthly meetings that include presentations, which cover topics that navigate today's educational environment. This, along with the Parent Project, ELAC, and the School Site Council, all contribute to the overall parent involvement offered on our campus.
On August 15th, the class of 2015 kicked off the year with senior sunrise in the Mark Makers Memorial Stadium. Seniors were able to watch the sunrise, bond with their peers, and enjoy complimentary juice and donuts. On August 22nd, we held our Welcome Back Assembly to introduce our staff, teachers, administration, and ASB students. Senior trip took place on September 20th. The seniors spent their day enjoying roller coasters and playing games at California's Great America, which included an all-you-can-eat buffet lunch. On August 8th, Link Crew Orientation was held for the upcoming freshmen so they can become familiar with their campus. Following this event on August 29th, Link Crew hosted their annual tailgate party for our freshmen. This was filled with many exciting games, music, food, and live entertainment from our impulse dance company. The event followed a warm and successful welcome to the freshmen on campus, as well as a bonding opportunity. On October 17th, Link Crew hosted the Link Crew Conference, which consisted of students from eight different schools. The conference included activities to improve leadership skills and icebreakers to get to know each other. Homecoming Spirit Week was from September 15th through September 19th, kicking off the Homecoming Fall Sports Rally. On September 26th, we held a homecoming parade featuring Impulse Dance Company, Varsity Cheer, BAN, Color Guard, and players of the fall sports teams. This parade led students into our annual Homecoming Palooza Talent Showcase, which kicked off our homecoming game against Sheldon. Performances from BAN, Impulse, and Cheer took place, as well as the introductions of the Homecoming royalty court during halftime.
Tryouts for winter sports, including wrestling and women's and men's basketball, took place on November 10th. Our fall sports team ended their seasons on a great note. Our men's soccer team, football team, and cross-country team advanced their way to the playoffs, while others' fall sports, such as women's tennis, cheer, women's golf, and water polo, saw an improvement in their programs. Monterey Trail's annual Club Rush was held from September 9th to 10th with a great turnout. Students from all grade levels were given the chance to explore the numerous clubs offered on our campus that consisted of academic, cultural, performing, and student-interest clubs, such as Key Club, Polly Ohana, Latino Club, and many more. So far in the year, we've had two new clubs, Traditional Martial Arts Club and Video Editing Club.
Monterey Trail's Plead to the Season took place on September 19th in our cafeteria and included performances by theater, band, Impulse, and choir. Our theater program presented the fall play, "Radium Girls," which took place from October 1st through October 4th and are currently holding auditions for the annual spring musical, "The Music Man." In addition, it was a very exciting opportunity to have the head of Globe Education in London, Georgia Alina, visit our campus and observe the performance of our children's theater class today. Impulse Dance Company has been working hard and had performed in numerous events on campus such as the rallies and the Link Crew Tailgate, as well as the annual Dance Fest held at Sheldon High School on November 1st. Meanwhile, BAN is performing for their concert, which will take place on December 17th.
We thank you for your time and support. Kelsey and I will be reporting back to you on January 20th with even more exceptional achievements by the Monterey Trail Mustangs.
Thank you. Very good report and very interesting learning about your parent involvement for high school students. Next, we have our student representatives from Valley High School.
Good evening and welcome, Superintendent Hoffman, President Cox, members of the Board, and Ms. Hein. My name is Mariah Howrigee, and I am a senior at Valley High School.
And my name is Jack Denho, and I am also a senior at Valley High School. Valley High School has been very busy these past two months. In the month of September, Valley had its Fall Renaissance Celebration, organized by our Renaissance Coordinator, Bianca Bernalis. Our students were celebrated and awarded with gold, bronze, silver, and blue cards, which included discounts, various privileges, and homework makeup passes. Each student also received a commemorative Valley Renaissance button, which we would also like to give to all of you as a small gift. We've congratulated our students for keeping up the good work and showing improvement in their academic studies. The most anticipated time of the year finally came, Powderpuff and Homecoming Week. To get everyone excited and jumping with spirit, we held our traditional Homecoming Presents Rally. Our Lady Vikings from all grade levels were brought down to the gym floor to perform their cheers in front of the whole school and get ready to play their game later that evening. Our junior and senior boys also showed their spirit and supported their classes and pumped up the crowd with their amazing performances. Later that evening, our freshmen and sophomores went head-to-head in the flag football game. Sophomores took the win over the freshmen with a 35-0 victory. Later that night, the intense rivalry continued as our junior and senior girls played their game of football. The game was a close one, but the ending result was a 28-7 win for our seniors. And of course, our halftime entertainment of the evening was provided by our fabulous male cheerleaders. We continued our homecoming celebrations as Valley's classes and clubs showcased all of their amazing floats in our Global Odyssey-themed homecoming parade. The day was a huge success. Each float was uniquely beautiful, and signs of hard work were evident. Looking at all the different floats was a great experience for the community as well as our students. The judges had a difficult decision to make, but in the end, first place went to the senior class with their Egyptian-themed float, followed by the junior class in second place, the sophomores in third place, and the freshmen in fourth place. The winner in our club category was our very own Latinos Unidos Club with a Brazil-themed float. All of the classes and clubs were filled with joy as their hard work was presented to both the school and community. Our Homecoming Week was filled with tons of spirit points and dress-up days. Our Valley Vikings showed off their spirit each day of the week. On Monday, our Vikings dressed up in their cultural clothes to show participation in Motherland Monday. Tuesday was Tropical Tuesday. Our students looked as if they were ready for a trip to Hawaii. Wednesday was Wacky Wednesday. Our Vikings showed their goofy side. Thursday was Throwback Thursday. We watched as our Vikings dressed up in their favorite eras, trends, and styles. And finally, on Friday, our Vikings showed their class spirit by wearing their VHS class colors.
The football game was the most spirited and exciting game of the year. Our football team played against Kennedy High School, and that sure was a good game. Both teams played their hardest, but Valley took the big 22-18 win. The night also consisted of the announcing of our 2014 Homecoming King and Queen. The candidates all patiently waited as the moment of truth arrived. In the end, our crown king was senior Jorveng, and our crown queen was senior Vanessa Granados. The day was filled with a lot of fun memories for our Vikings. The Homecoming Dance was a blast. Our City of Lights theme was outstanding, and everyone that attended danced the night away. The night was a beautiful success, thanks to the hard work of our ASB students. Valley's Academic Block V Celebration was held on October 16th, and it was a time of great Valley pride, as we looked around the room and saw how much Block V had grown and how many students improved their past GPAs. Each student received an award as their name was called, and they walked the stage. We would like to thank Ms. Cox and Ms. Amavista for always supporting this event, and wish them the very best in your retirement. The entire event was a humbling and exciting experience for our Vikings. Valley's football team has made history this year. Our Vikings finished the season with a 6-5 record and made a playoff appearance for the first time in fourteen years. Our boys played their hearts out this season, and we are very proud of them and look forward to many more winning seasons to come. Our year so far has been filled with many memories for our Vikings, but the events don't stop here. This Friday, we will be putting on our Winter Sports Rally. We invite all of you to come join in on our Viking spirit for a day. This has been our report for the night. We thank you for your time. Good night.[665.23][665.23](APPLAUSE).
Thank you. And as many of you know, we have a Valley Viking alumni up here in our superintendent.
We do.
Very proud Valley alumni. Before we go any further, I'd like to make an introduction. We had a school board election on November 4th, among many other elections, and Beth Albiani is here, who is going to be a school board member starting in December, if you would like to stand and be recognized.[698.43][698.43](APPLAUSE). That face, she will be representing my area, my trustee area. And I don't know if Crystal is here tonight?
She is.
Okay, let me know, and I will introduce her, too. And next on the agenda is a California School Board Association recognition, and I'm going to let Mr. Hoffman introduce us.
I'm glad to. It is my pleasure to introduce Vernon Billy, who is the CEO and Executive Director of the California School Boards Association, and Mr. Billy is here to make a special presentation. So, thank you.[735.93][735.93](MUTUAL VOICES).
Good evening, Madam President and Board of Education. It gives me a great pleasure to be here, not only as the Executive Director of CSBA, but also as a parent of students here in the school district. Before I get into my formal presentation, I do want to say, I really enjoyed hearing the student presentations, and I got to tell you, when I get back to work, I'm going to tell my staff, "We're going to institute Wacky Wednesdays," because I really like that, and I think there's something to there. So, I really enjoy listening to the students talk about what they're doing. I think that's great. I don't want to take up too much of your time. I know you guys are extremely busy, but I did want to come by and acknowledge, Priscilla, your work on CSBA over the years, on the Board in particular. I was honored to have the chance to work with you for a number of years, and over the last four years that I've been there, I can just say, and I think it's important for all of you to know, that from my perspective, when Priscilla spoke, folks listened, and she brought a very powerful perspective to the Board and to the work that we did at CSBA, and not just at the Board meeting, but participating in all the work that we did. As you know, our annual conference and our planning committee and chairing that, that's our premier professional development event for school board members from across the state, and Priscilla chaired that for us, and also working on wellness and representing us at the CTC, and the list is endless. Actually, my staff gave me a list of all the things that you did, and I just thought to myself, "Okay, there's no way I can read all of this. We'll be here all night." But that is really just a testament to your commitment when you're involved. And I have here for you tonight, and I can bring this up to you if that's... Oh, you're going to come down? And I won't read all of this, but it's basically, it's a resolution from CSBA to you, signed by this year's President Josephine Lucy from Cupertino, acknowledging your work with CSBA over the years. And just wanted to come by and say thank you. There you go. Okay? Thank you.[863.99][863.99](APPLAUSE). And now, if you could indulge me again for another few minutes here. I also want to take a moment to also acknowledge one of your other Board members that has served on our Delegate Assembly, which is our other governing body of the Association for fifteen years, and that's Jeanette, and want to, again, thank you for your service. And in fact, and again, going through all the information, I'm told that you've attended thirty of our annual conferences, and so I think that's got to be a record, and so you've got to be the best-trained Board Member of the state. So, I want to thank you for your service and commitment to CSBA as a delegate. You've made important contributions, serving on our Linked Learning Task Force most recently, which was extremely important, and contributing to the work at the state level around Linked Learning, so I want to thank you for that, as well as your work on the Annual Conference Committee, as well as, and this is a number of years ago, is on our Schools and Media's Crisis Communications Task Force, all of an important work that helped Board members across the state. And so, again, I just want to, on behalf of CSBA, the Board of Directors and President, just wanted to come and tell you thank you for your service, and good luck to both you and to Priscilla in the next chapters of your life, and I have a resolution here for you as well. Okay?[972.32][972.32](APPLAUSE). And I'm just going to, I'm going to hopefully not embarrass you guys too much, but I had an opportunity to tour the schools with the both of you, and I get a chance to see, to tour schools all across, up and down the state, and I have to tell you, not just because this is where my kids go to school, but that was one of the best tours that I've ever had with both of you, and going around the schools and seeing all the great work. So, I just wanted to tell you guys thank you, and it's a testament to the great work you guys are doing as a Board here in Elk Grove, so thank you. Okay?
Thank you so much.
We've got the new superintendent, outgoing, incoming and outgoing.
Thank you again. I really appreciate you coming out.
Thank you for your work.
You can stay for the rest of the meeting if you want.
I've got kids to go see.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. the good work you do, Mr. Billy, on everything, so we appreciate that. Valley High School, sorry, I forgot to excuse you, but thank you, and Dan Lane and the Principal for being here tonight, Chelsea Bowler Shelton, and I think we have the Principals from the other high schools, too. Okay, moving along here, we have recognition of some very special community partners that have been very helpful for our students, and Mr. Steinhar will introduce our Vision Care Community Partners.
President Cox, members of the Board, Superintendent Hoffman, and Ms. Hine, I'm joined tonight by our two Coordinators of Healthy Start Family Centers, Annette Stringer and Sandy Waite, in this recognition. As you well know, there are many gaps in our society that deprives children of an opportunity to succeed. Vision impairment is a significant one, especially for students in low-income communities. Tonight, we recognize three community partners of Elk Grove for their extraordinary efforts to provide vision exams and eyeglasses to the students of our district. These organizations have, in effect, formed a safety net for students so that no child goes without needed vision screening and glasses. Their partnerships have been coordinated through the efforts of the Healthy Start Family Centers, along with our nurses in elementary and secondary education divisions. The first organization is Vision to Learn. It is an organization created by the Butner Family Foundation of Los Angeles. The mission of this foundation is born out of a deep belief that public education is the foundation of our future. In the spring of 2013, the foundation looked to expand its program statewide from Los Angeles to other areas, including Northern California. Elk Grove was one of the original Sacramento partners of Vision to Learn, and its efforts to provide children in low-income communities the glasses they need to build a foundation for success. Throughout the last school year, the Healthy Start Family Centers coordinated efforts among Vision to Learn, school nurses, and our Title I elementary schools. After initial vision screenings by nurses, students were referred for further examination by Vision to Learn optometrists, who came by mobile clinics to each Title I elementary school. After eye exams, students were allowed to choose their own frames, and free glasses were dispensed at the school site two to three weeks after the initial visit. In the 2013-2014 school year, 1,135 students of our district were examined, and 1,068 pairs of glasses were dispensed to students without cost. The grand total of services provided to our students through Vision to Learn amounted Vision to Learn is represented by two education advocates tonight, Samia Stigler and David Konig. Ms. Stigler is an education and public policy professional who served as the former Deputy Director for Sacramento Reeds. Samia was the guiding force behind bringing Vision to Learn to Elk Grove schools and was the first to make contact with our district. She continues to be a dedicated advocate for children of the Sacramento area, including two of her own. And Mr. Konig is a public affairs consultant who has worked with Vision to Learn since its inception, actually authoring the first plan for the establishment of a nonprofit that would later become Vision to Learn. With a background in political campaigning, David worked for Rod Reiner on early childhood education issues for three years, and then, seven years ago, began his own firm of Konig Consulting. His public affairs firm works on such issues as library funding, stem-cell research, smoking in films, early childhood education, facility construction, arts education, educational data systems, affordable housing, and medical, among others. Tonight, we want to recognize Vision to Learn. We invite...
I believe Jeanette and myself are going to...
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you.
I just say a few words before...
Oh, okay. I'll be quick.
Thank you. Thank you for having us. Thank you, Superintendent Hoffman and President Cox, for having us. Special thanks to Superintendent Lad, who was a firm believer in what we're doing. He was a major advocate for us, and Maggie Ellis from the Elk Grove Education Association. And I want to especially recognize Sandy Waite and Annette Stringer from your Student Support and Health Services Department, who have been awesome, and I work with a lot of school districts, and I know what awesome looks like, and that's it right there.[1405.23][1405.23](LAUGHTER). And also want to thank the staff and teachers at the pre-K, K-5, and after-school programs, and Samia Stigler, who is the reason why this program's at Elk Grove. And lastly, I would say to anybody here, or anybody who hasn't seen our program, come visit it. We'll be at your schools in the next couple of weeks, next couple of months. Come see what it looks like for a kid to get glasses the first time in fifth grade, fourth grade, third grade. Thank you.[1430.65][1430.65](APPLAUSE).
Good evening. So, we'll have Lucinda Ward and Ms. Teresa Callahan come up, if we could, from the Vision Global Program. For over twenty years, the VSP Global, formerly known as Vision Service Plan, have been helping families in the Elk Grove Unified School District with obtaining vision coverage, both exams and glasses. It is the only nationally non-for-profit vision care company and is based in Rancho Cordova. VSP Global offers high-quality services to its members, clients, brokers, and doctors, but it doesn't stop there. VSP is passionate about giving back to the community. Through its Eyes of Hope program, VSP sponsored and collected used glasses from attendees of a Sacramento Kings game. Elk Grove Unified School District was designated to receive the benefits of these recycled glasses, and in turn, was given free certificates for students' eye exams and glasses. This resulted in 528 certificates for students without vision coverage. Healthy Start coordinated the distribution effort, resulting in $56,000 worth of contribution of services. We want to extend our thanks to Ms. Lucinda Ward, the VSP Global Regional Vice President, and Ms. Teresa Callahan from the Global Marketing Department. Thank you. Awesome.[1517.95][1517.95](APPLAUSE).
One of you would like to speak. Listen up.
Thank you for having us. We are honored to have you invite us here to thank us. VSP is a company here locally, and Elk Grove is obviously a client of VSP, and we want to give back to the students, and I will say that this is perfection. I work with a lot of different school districts that sometimes we don't even get phone calls back, so thank you for your participation and for helping us help the kids. Thanks.[1552.23][1552.23](APPLAUSE).
The Elk Grove Lions have long partnered with Elk Grove Unified School District to assist students in need of vision support. They have also collaborated with Vision Service Plan to provide undocumented students with vision services. This is an area that the Elk Grove Lions have been able to provide a further safety net and ensure that all students receive vision services. The Elk Grove Lions have expanded services to include help with hearing issues and have also provided hearing aids to some students in Elk Grove Unified School District. The combined vision and hearing services reached over 300 students and resulted in contributions of $12,000 in the 2013-2014 school year. Mr. Dave King is representing the Elk Grove Lions, but he also brought President of Elk Grove Lions, Pancho Sanchez, and their district governor, Andy Anderson.[1612.35][1612.35](APPLAUSE).
Board President and members, and Superintendent Hoffman, we're really honored to be here. For more than sixty years, we've been a part of the Elk Grove community. We've provided services and spaghetti dinners and breakfasts to probably every school in the district at least once. In the last several years, we've partnered with the Healthy Start Program, with Sandy and Annette, and all the nurses at the schools, and providing vision services. We're honored to be here, and we'll be here for many more than sixty years, I hope. Maybe not me.[1644.85][1644.85](LAUGHTER).
I have a question.[1646.85][1646.85](APPLAUSE). Hello, hello? When's your next fundraiser?
June, December 6th.
December 6th? Where?
The SCSL, which are crafty.
How much?
Four thousand dollars.[1655.85][1655.85](LAUGHTER).
Okay.[1657.85]
both of you and Beth Albionni. Okay, we now have academic recognition of our fall student athletes and coaches, and Rod Edmiston will do this presentation assisted by Mr. Fortina.
Good evening. President Cox, members of the school board, Superintendent Hoffman, Ms. Heine. Elk Grove Unified School District is known for excellence in athletics. It will be my pleasure to come back here in the weeks and months to come and recognize our section, Northern California, and even state champions. But this evening, I am honored to bring you a different sort of champion. These teams exemplify what being student athletes is all about. Excellence's not only in their athletic activity, but also in the classroom. The following teams had the highest grade point average at their school this fall. As a longtime classroom teacher and coach, I can attest to the dedication and commitment displayed by each of these fine student athletes. With that, I would like to introduce the coaches and captains of our GPA champions. From Consonna Soaks High School, women's tennis with a team GPA of 4.17, Coach Chris Wall, captains Chloe Anderson and Louisa Masado.
Captain Sadie Davenport, and Randy Peterson.
From Florin High School, cross-country with a team GPA of 3.6, Coach David Brey, Captain Stella Al, and Angel Perez.
From Franklin High School, women's tennis, team GPA 4.11, Coach Jessie Pangalinen, captains Laura Lamb and Kathleen Quinn.
Laguna Creek High School, women's cross-country, team GPA 4.47, Coach Brian Gilka, Captain Jessica Valenzuela.
We're going to take a quick picture because we have so many, and then we'll come back and finish up, start with Monterey Trail.
Thank you, and I'd like to recognize the principals of these schools, if you would. I think several of you are here back there, they're all in the back there. Let's see them all. Thank you. Let's see, Elk Grove High, Franklin High, Laguna Creek, Monterey? Oh.
Monterey Trail High School, women's cross-country, team GPA 4.03, Coach Kim Hitchcock, captains
From Pleasant Grove High School, women's tennis, team GPA 3.85, Coach Brian Brown, captains Megan Sterk and Emily Lay.
Sheldon High School, women's tennis, team GPA 3.78, Coach Luis Lopez, captain Nancy Tran.
Valley High School, women's tennis, team GPA 3.42, Coach Tong Lee, captain Cheyenne Vang, Rachel Quayar.
Coach Lee wanted me to say that this is his 14th time in a row for winning the award at Valley.
I was just going to ask that.
And we really do want to recognize the coaches, too. They just play an instrumental role in the success of our student athletes, and not only helping them academically and athletically, but they're also there for them emotionally and as help in guiding them through their future. And I just can't say enough about our coaches. They're exceptionally good in our district. Oh, the principals for these schools, I saw Mr. Meyer and Ms. Chelsea, and Mr. Don Ross from Florin. Anybody else? Okay. Congratulations for parents. Thank you, students, and for succeeding on the field and in the classroom. And thank you, Mr. Edison.
Thank you.
Next, we have our 2014 National FFA Convention from several of our high schools that traveled back to the National FFA Conference.
Good evening, President Cox and board members and Ms. Heine. I'll recognize Mr. Hoffman when he comes back. Another night for lots of student recognition. We are here before you tonight to inform you about the students and programs from our agriculture programs who were recognized nationally at the conference in Louisville last month. So we'll start with, let's see, who do I have up? Sheldon High School, Jim. Yeah, Jim Looper is the coordinator there, and he'll come up first.
Thank you, Kathy. Good evening. Wow, you guys are almost all gone. All right. Board, Ms. Heine, Mr. Hoffman, congratulations and welcome home. So, you know, because of all the time, the dedication, the planning, the tough decisions you all make, there's an awful lot of student achievement that does take place. Thank you for recognizing our students here tonight for their personal growth and their success in the FFA. Sheldon had 11 FFA members who attended the Very High Energy 87th National FFA Convention that was held last month in Louisville, Kentucky. This past conference had over 65,000 of the nation's most motivated and driven students attend. Students became engaged in a wide array of competitions, workshops, leadership sessions, debates, tours, interviews, not to mention exploring colleges and conversing with industry representatives from all over the nation. Sheldon had three freshman young ladies who qualified last year to represent the state at the national convention. They were competing as sophomores based on their qualifications last year, and I'd like to call those up right now. First is Annie McGonigal, who competed as a novice individual in the environmental and natural resource systems category for her vermicompost agri-science study. She studied the nutrient levels of different composting materials. Annie, can you please join me up here, please? Annie earned a seventh place in the nation and earned herself a seventh, I'm sorry, seventh place in the nation and a silver medal for her research. Congratulations, Annie. Competing as a novice team in the animal science category, or animal systems category, for their show broiler feed trial was Jessica Connolly and Hallie Hunter. Hallie is out sick, she's been out sick with strep throat all week, but Jessica is here. Jessica, can you please join us up front? Jessica and her partner, Hallie, earned third place in the nation and a gold medal for their research. Awards aside, the journey of these young ladies and all the others who are not here tonight, the journey they've traveled has taught each of these students to work cooperatively, think critically, solve problems, manage their time, and I believe they are definitely well on their way to becoming very productive citizens. Thank you for funding and supporting our ag education programs. Tonight, I only recognized a small few of our amazing students. Please know that our programs do touch and positively affect the lives of so many more. Thank you very much.
Heather, could you come up, please, for the picture? Now, I would like to call up Sheila Folen as Sheldon's leaving, Sheila Folen from Florin High.
Thank you, Ms. Hamilton. Good evening, President Cox, members of the board, Superintendent Hoffman, and Ms. Heine. It is really with much thanks that we appreciate being able to honor our students this evening before you. Thank you for doing that. At the same time, we would very much like to express our appreciation to Ms. Hamaviska and to Ms. Cox for their many years of service to our programs and to our school district. We would also like to give a very warm welcome to Superintendent Hoffman. Thank you for joining us here in Elk Grove and coming home. At this time, it gives me a great deal of pleasure to introduce two very accomplished young women who are here to represent our chapter tonight. They include Ms. Melody Jimenez and Ms. An Nguyen, President and Vice President of our FFA chapter. They are here to receive our National Chapter Award, which we were presented with in Louisville this year, and at the same time, they are here to receive their science fair project that was based on egg production, in which they received a bronze award at the national level. Please join me in congratulating them this evening, and again, thank you very much.
And as Florin's exiting, I'll invite Mike Albionni and team to come up to introduce students from Elk Grove High.
I'm just going to do some. They fear with all you guys up here, too many. Oh, she's over here. President Cox, members of the board, Superintendent Hoffman, Mrs. Heine, it's my pleasure to be before you tonight, and thank you for supporting our students at this time. I'd also like to introduce the two coaches of these students. I am, I guess, the academy coordinator or the department head or whatever, and I have the pleasure of getting to work with some outstanding people, and two of them are in the room, and they worked the most with these students in agri-science, farm business management, and the National Knowledge Bowl, and that'd be Matt Patton and Brittany Wyler. Previously, you've heard about the national convention, and it is, you know, it is the largest youth convention in the nation, actually in the world, and 19 students from the Elk Grove FFA qualified for national recognition or competition this past calendar year and represented our district in Louisville this past November. Our chapter had two American FFA degree recipients, nine agri-science projects, a national proficiency finalist, and two CDE competing teams in farm business management and the National Knowledge Bowl. These students worked all last year and throughout the summer to be ready to represent our district. There are over, there are 20 categories in agri-science between the novice and the advanced, so I won't read you exactly what category each of them was in, but I would like to introduce them and tell you what they received. First, we'll start with farm business management. There were four members of the team. Only one of the members of the team didn't double up and also compete in agri-science, so first, we'd like Ms. Shelby Clifford to come up. She's on the farm business management team that received a silver award. Now to agri-science, and many of them, if they doubled up, I'll let you know what they did. First was Sadie Wepner. Sadie Wepner was fifth place in the nation with a gold award in with her agri-science project that actually, interestingly enough, dealt with the scores, the KC scores of academy and agricultural academy students against the district and found out that we did exceedingly well. and to Ms. Cox for their many years of service to our programs and to our school district. We would also like to give a very warm welcome to Superintendent Hoffman. Thank you for joining us here in Elk Grove and coming home. At this time, it gives me a great deal of pleasure to introduce two very accomplished young women who are here to represent our chapter tonight. They include Ms. Melody Jimenez and Ms. An Nguyen, president and vice president of our FFA chapter. They are here to receive our national chapter award, which we were presented with in Louisville this year, and at the same time, they are here to receive their science fair project that was based on egg production, in which they received a bronze award at the national level. Please join me in congratulating them this evening, and again, thank you very much.
And Dawn, Dawn Russ? And as Florin's exiting, I'll invite Mike Albiani and team to come up to introduce students from Elk Grove High.
I'm just gonna do some. They fear with all you guys up here, too many. Oh, she's over here. President Cox, members of the board, Superintendent Hoffman, Mrs. Heine. It's my pleasure to be before you tonight, and thank you for supporting our students at this time. I'd also like to introduce the two coaches of these students. I am, I guess, the academy coordinator, the department head, or whatever, and I have the pleasure of getting to work with some outstanding people, and two of them are in the room, and they worked the most with these students in agri-science, farm business management, and the National Knowledge Bowl, and that'd be Matt Patton and Brittany Wyler. Previously, you've heard about the national convention, and it is, you know, it is the largest youth convention in the nation, actually in the world, and 19 students from the Elk Grove FFA qualified for national recognition or competition this past calendar year and represented our district in Louisville this past November. Our chapter had two American FFA degree recipients, nine agri-science projects, a national proficiency finalist, and two CDE competing teams in farm business management and the National Knowledge Bowl. These students worked all last year and throughout the summer to be ready to represent our district. There are over, there are 20 categories in agri-science between the novice and the advanced, so I won't read you exactly what category each of them was in, but I would like to introduce them and tell you what they received. First, we'll start with farm business management. There were four members of the team. Only one of the members of the team didn't double up and also compete in agri-science, so first, we'd like Ms. Shelby Clifford to come up. She's on the farm business management team that received a silver award. Now to agri-science, and many of them, if they doubled up, I'll let you know what they did. First was Sadie Wemner. Sadie Wemner was fifth place in the nation with a gold award in, with her agri-science project that actually, interestingly enough, dealt with the scores, the KC scores of academy and agricultural academy students against the district and found out that we did exceedingly well. Next, we have Cece Infante. Cece was 10th and a silver award with her agri-science project, and she was also on the eighth-place National Knowledge Bowl team. A team project saw Amanda Brown and Janay Haddon, they also scored fifth, and they had, and they were a gold award team. Another team, Brana Hoag and Prentice Hitt, were again fifth in the nation and a gold medal team. We kinda got stuck in this fifth hole. There's 15 in every category that qualify for nationals through a paper screening, and we're gonna get a little better in a minute. Sarah Sigmund and Logan Sigmund, and Logan was, had a unique distinction of being our only boy of the 19 on the trip. Were sixth with a gold, and then Sarah was also a member of the eighth-place National Knowledge Bowl team. We had Lexi Stroud and Malia Dietz, again, agri-science, gold, and fifth. We'll bump up the stakes a bit. Carly Haas was third in the nation, gold medal team, I'm, gold medal individual with her agri-science project. This next pair, Carly Clement. Yep, I got it. Sorry, let's go back up. Thank you, Matt. Mary Swanberg and Emily Melis, fifth nation, gold team. Also, both of these young ladies were on the eighth-place National Farm Business Management team. Finishing up on agri-science, Carly Clement and Taylor Appleman. These two young ladies with their project earned national champion in their agri-science category. We had two American FFA degree recipients that are not here this evening, they're away at school, Madison Albiani and Jackie Hardisty, both long-term members of the Elk Grove FFA. Madison was also a national proficiency runner-up within her agri-science area. In closing, we would, we would like to thank President Cox for her service on our ag advisory committee, and we hope that she will stick around in her retirement and, and keep giving us some wisdom and, and some direction as we work forward in producing more students like this to make our district proud. Thank you very much.
If there's any parents in the audience that wanna come up and take pictures, come on, now's the time to do it. So come on down.
We're done. Yeah. Okay. Thank you, board members. That concludes our presentation for tonight. Thank you all. It's quite an honor to go to nationals and to have such a large group and good representation from our schools and our district. Really speaks well for our teachers and our coaches and our academy coordinators, and I've really enjoyed my time on the ag advisory. It's very humbling to see what these students can do. Next, we are on to student expulsion recommendation. Is there anyone who wishes to address the board in closed session? Seeing no one, I will call for a motion to approve the requests for student expulsions. Has been moved and seconded to approve the request for student expulsions. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried unanimously. Next, we will hear from Mr. Sarudi on the local control accountability plan, and again, thank you to Mr. Sarudi for his last two months as superintendent. You did a terrific job, and we're very grateful for you. And now you're back to...
I'm back down here on the first floor. I'm comfortable being here. Thank you, President Cox, members of the board, Superintendent Hoffman and Ms. Heine. Thank you for the opportunity this evening to provide a brief but important LCAP overview and update. We ground all of our work in the district's teaching and learning vision. We refer to it as E4 for every student, learning in every classroom and every subject every day. There is a slight, but albeit extremely important addition we've made to that graphic, and it's right underneath there where it talks, it denotes college and career-ready graduates, because ultimately, that is the goal of all of the work and all of those foundation elements of high-quality classroom instruction and assessment of students and programs, wellness, and parent and family and community partnerships, and then supported by those support elements, and I won't go through them all, but we use that for planning and decision-making. And that's what has led us to our four strategic goals in our LCAP. And a quick review of those. The first is a focus on high-quality teaching and ultimately, learning and supporting our teachers with curriculum and professional learning and resources to support our kids, and that support also is to our principals. Assessment, data analysis, and action is looking at both student and programmatic assessment. The wellness piece is extremely comprehensive, because within our LCAP, it really starts with personal safety and a physical environment, and that's attached directly to the exceptional work that Mr. Pierce and his folks with our facilities, maintenance, and operations ensure that our kids have high-quality facilities each and every day, and it's ensuring the social and emotional wellness of our kids and social-emotional learning is being integrated directly into the common core and tremendous work daily in our classrooms. And then the tremendous PBIS initiative that's going on across our district, and the board will be receiving information from, about an update on our PBIS program in a few meetings to come, and then, of course, we can't do this alone. It's a complete integrated partnership with our families and community. I wanted to focus and make sure that folks know as we're, as we're working that work is, has been taking place and continues to take place. I'm not going to go through all of these at all, but what it does is it points out to, starting back in August, we've been engaging our community in LCAP-related work, and I do want to make sure that I give kudos and a shout-out to my good friend and colleague, Ms. Sanja Lowry, who's the director of Learning Support Services. She does a phenomenal job of wrangling all these components of LCAP, and she's extremely knowledgeable of the LCAP, as well as does a tremendous job strategically in, in working, and I value the work that she does with me each and every day in orchestrating all of this. So we've been doing a work, as you can see, through, beginning back in August, all the way up to, and it includes the community meetings that you as board members have engaged in. This takes a look at what's the upcoming in December and takes you through January. And I just wanna also point out that one of the core components to engaging our community is not just the, the community meetings, for example, that are taking place with our D-LAC and CAC and finance committees, and the meetings that are taking place through foster youth, all important, but a real core component is that our sites are engaging in the work that we've done to integrate and align the site LCAPs with our district LCAP. Again, that's not a requirement to do that. Our sites have to have single-school plans, but they don't have to be directly in the same format and same structure as our LCAP, and that's an extra step that Elk Grove has taken, and it's led to, I know we like to hear that the work that we do receives recognition, and most recently, we were invited to go down to San Diego to present down in San Diego, and it's just not going to be timely for us to do that, but it was for that very reason, was the integration of our site LCAP plans with the district LCAP. The LCAP consultation committee, this is the last piece I just wanna mention, because at the workshop, I mentioned this to the board, and as a board collectively, you view that as a positive thing. I've talked to Mr. Hoffman about this as well, because this isn't a committee that's a requirement of the LCAP process. This is the, as it indicated, and as it indicates at the bottom of this slide, December 11th is when we are scheduled, and actually, a communication and an invitation will be going out to the representatives on the, on that committee, and it's really to focus on process. There's so much, and there's such a criticality to ensuring that we're engaging our community in consultation and review of the LCAP, but in addition to that, with this, with as many metrics as we have, and we shared that with the board at the workshop when Christine Hakido was here, and walked you through all the metrics that were responsible for reporting out, there are a myriad of questions that can be asked in terms of how do we ensure that our community is both informed and engaged, but most importantly, how do we make sure that the information that they're getting is in a usable and meaningful format? So a variety of, of process-related critical questions this group is going to be responding to and providing feedback and consultation to us on. And lastly, tomorrow, in cabinet, we'll be taking a look, and we do every cabinet, there's a standing LCFF LCAP agenda item, and what I'll be bringing to cabinet tomorrow is the most recent adopted LCAP template. It's very, very similar in many regards to the prior template that we used last year. I think there's some refinements that actually make it a better reporting tool, but one of the key pieces is there's a component that's an update, and what that update means is the basic questions we're responding to is every goal we had, every initiative we had, and every expenditure we had, the question is, what was it intended to do, and how did you do? And so that's a key component, and it's a new piece of what we will be doing, obviously, every single year that we move through it. And my last comment is, back when we looked at E4, one of the components and those surrounding elements says continuous improvement, and I had an opportunity to meet with Mr. Fortina today, and Elk Grove, for a number of years now, in an expanding manner, has been systematically used what we, what we refer to as a decision-making model, and it is a national, internationally standardized, and you've heard me say this before, but I was thrilled to see Mr. Fortina pull that sheet of paper out of his, out of his folder, and he said that he actually uses that when he goes out and he's meeting, and he meets with our, with our administrators and teachers, and it helps guide his question and answers and his thought processes we go through, and it's, it's actually a mirrored image of what the LCAP process is. So I share that because this isn't anything new for Elk Grove. We've been doing this for years, and it's the reason that we stay one step ahead, is because we've been using these, these systems and processes for years. So with that, I'll take any questions. Yeah, thank you.
If I recall correctly, Mark, the service on consultation committee, you're looking at at least a two-year commitment. Is that correct?
Thank you, Mr. Fortina, yes, and, and so the information that went out to folks, the reason for a two-year commitment, and we realize that's a, that may not always, always last, but the reason being, we're looking at three to four meetings a year. This isn't a group that necessarily will get together on a monthly basis, probably on a trimester basis to continue to, to look at our process, but the key is, these are folks that are gonna have to become extremely knowledgeable of the LCAP process, and so if we continue to, and it could be, it could be viewed as a positive thing to engage a lot of people, and so you come one month, you come the next meeting, you come the next meeting, and it shifts, we would be spending a great deal of time continuing to educate folks and deepen their level of understanding, so we are looking for a sustained commitment to enable us to move forward.
Okay. And my second question is either of you or Ms. Cox, what process are we gonna utilize to submit board names for the consultation committee?
I was asked to, to suggest or recommend board members, and I'm not sure when this begins, but one of my thoughts was that we would have a board member that had been on the board and maybe one of our newer board members to get up to speed, and I had suggested Mr. Madison and Ms. Albiani as potential board members.
And I'll take that direction from the board president and our superintendent.
I don't know that, that, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, that it's your prerogative as a board president to speak on behalf of the entire Board of Education when there's a number of us who had a high interest level in participating on that committee.
Generally, a board president appoints committee members, but I'm certainly open for discussion if there are people that want to bring that up in the process.
Yes, I'm interested in this. I agree with Mr. Fortina that we should have more participation of board members.
I don't think we should have any more than, than the two.
Two.
Also, I think we also wait until we've, the other new board members come on board to have their input.
Well, then we can wait on the committee till the organizational meeting and have the new president appoint board members to the committee, but it would delay that appointment. So if that's what the board wishes to do, you can wait till that. It's fine with me.
Okay, well, I, I need to state that I do have a high interest in participating in that committee. I think my background and my experience speaks for itself with respect to what I could bring to that committee. Certainly willing to, to make the time commitment, whatever that commitment might be, and certainly would like consideration.
Okay, why don't we do the organization, after the organizational meeting, then the new board president can appoint the, the two committee members?
Yes, I'm also interested in being a member of that because of my expertise in bilingual ed and my master's of education within the special ed.
Okay, we'll leave that for the next meeting, then.
Certainly, and I, if my dates are correct, the board meeting is on December 9th, and the first meeting is on December 11th.
Correct. Okay.
Can I weigh in on this since my last board meeting? I concur with Mrs. Cox with she, may her recommendation, but whoever becomes president next time, they can do whatever they want, and the rest of the board can do, but as far as the rest of the, the makeup of the rest of the committee, I would like to suggest that you pick and choose members that were on the superintendent's selection committee. There was a really good crop, cross-reference of, of community members and stuff on that, and I think they were very committed, and so my two cents in picking from other than the board members, but picking members for the committee, that would...
And there's probably, I can't say that it's a mirrored image, but it's probably very similar, because we have, for example, we have representatives, and I appreciate the involvement and immediate support from all of our bargaining units, so there'll be representatives from every bargaining unit, there's representatives from every one of our district committees, so for example, the finance committee, our D-LAC committee, our Indian Ed Committee, there's, and we've actually even gone outside of that to secure some representatives from other interest groups, for example, our CAP parent group that has worked with Laguna Creek and across the district, so I've been in contact with John Taylor, so it's a, it's a, it is a, probably a very similar makeup of the group that was involved with the selection of the superintendent.
I think it was a very committed committee, and I think that they're, you know, very, very astute, and, and I think that they, they would be, again, committed to the, to the process.
How many parents do we have on this committee?
I'd have to go and, and take a look at exactly the number, but we've got pretty much confirmation from the entire roster, so I can actually send that information to the board if you wanted to see the actual makeup of the, of the group.
What do you mean by confirmation?
Well, what we're waiting for is actual confirmation of the names of the people assigned to the, assigned to it, and I believe we had two that were remaining, and we may have gotten them, Lori Gardner, my assistant, may have gotten those today, so I can actually send the entire roster to the board if you're interested.
Yes, I would like that. Also, what type of training will they have?
Well, that's part of what we'll be doing, a portion of the very... A portion of the very first meeting will be a kind of LCAP 101, so folks understand the legislative language around it. And this is a group involved in process, and it's real crucial that we understand that's the focus of the group. There will absolutely be a natural inclination for anybody who sits down to say, to take a look at the LCAP and want to have feedback in terms of the areas of focus and priority. And that's what the board, obviously, is interested in. But that work is taking place in all those committees that you saw through the site LCAP process. This is actually a process-only group, and I don't want to limit what it's doing, but that's a crucial responsibility for what they're doing, is taking a look at process.
So also, you're going to provide us the process to submit names to the committee? When are you going to do that?
I'm not sure I understand.
You mentioned just a minute ago that you would give us the process, how to submit names for this committee.
The names have already been submitted. They're just waiting for confirmation.
What we did is, that's exactly right. So for example, with our bargaining units, I contacted the heads of each bargaining unit, gave them the information, and requested a representative from each of those groups. We worked with our various groups and the leaders of the D-LAC group and so on and so forth to get the names and the roster that we've solidified over the course of the past couple of weeks.
Besides the unions, what other stakeholders are, does the actual community know how the process? Was there a news article about if you were interested in being a member of this committee? How do we do outreach?
No. The outreach that we did was we went to all of the mandated stakeholder groups that we have. So for example, through EL, what we did is we went to our D-LAC group and requested a representative from the D-LAC group, from our CAC, which is not necessarily a state-mandated group, but it's a district group. That's our special ed parent group. We pulled a representative from that, so that's where we went out. And then we did have some interest from, for example, from the CAP group through Mr. Taylor, and so we pulled a representative from the CAP group. But we didn't necessarily put a flyer out. What we did is we went to all of our existing constituencies and sought their selection of a representative from those various groups.
Well, I have an issue with that, because our participation in parents has been nill. In other words, we need to go out there and hit the payment out there and do more recruitment of parents so they could be in the engagement process of this exercise.
The one thing that I would say, Mr. Perez, is that don't forget the level of engagement that Higgs placed at all 64 school sites. That's crucial of what's going on, because we pull all of that information from all of those schools, and that all filters back to us and you. And so it's not just the district committee. And that district committee, quite honestly, if it gets too large, it's going to become unwieldy.
Well, that's where I'm talking from. We had our school site committee member, sites hearings, and only maybe one to two to five at the most participated in those. So what does that tell me? There's no outreach, and the people in the community don't know what's their roles and responsibilities in this LCAP process.
May I just interject that when you send us the confirmation list, I think that you'll see that there's representation of parents and that these groups are actually made up of parents, like the CAC and the D-LAC and the other groups, including some of our bargaining union members. So I think maybe that will help you see who's the makeup of the committee and that it is representative of parents. And it's just another, it was a board discussion that we had. As a board, we decided to have a committee that represented all the groups, similar to the committee that did our superintendent search. And it's not required, but it was recommended, and we decided as a board to do it, using our existing groups to draw from. But in addition to that, there, at every school site, there's involvement from parents. So I think when you see the confirmation list, when that gets done, it might be more helpful to you to see that we are actually involving parents.
I kind of seen, and I know what you're talking about, but you know what? I think we need a fresh look at participation in our committees of English-language learners. We need Sikh representation. We need Mung representation. We need other ethnic groups in this thing. And I don't see this in this committee.
Okay. Well, when you see it, then you can bring the questions back so that you know what who is on the committee and what is made up of. Are there any other questions on the LCAP? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And thank you for getting that going. We do not have a budget update, and we have public comment, and we have two blue cards that are items not on the agenda. Susan Mason and Catherine Duran. And you'll have three minutes each, and state your name for the record, please.
President Cox, members of the board, Superintendent Hoffman, and Ms. Hines. My name is Susan Mason. Tonight, I'd like to make just a few comments on the community meeting, school board meeting that I attended on October 28th at Laguna High School. It struck me after I left that Mr. Sarudi repeated twice that the goal of the 2018 budget is to achieve the 2007, 2008 budget levels. I kind of wondered what that meant in terms of finances for the district. It seemed crazy to me, but he repeated it twice, and so I listened. I'm concerned that the school district is only hopes to have the same funding four years from now that they had six to seven years ago. You've got to increase student populations, increase regulations. I'm concerned that the school board adopted the Common Core national standards, probably without researching any estimated future costs. So I just wanted to bring that up. Second, there were several questions at the meetings, and I was told that there was going to be a compilation of all the questions and responses from all the different meetings. And are the answers coming? I haven't seen anything posted on the website. I still haven't received a response to the question I presented there. Do you expect an increase in funding or budgeting if a decrease in student achievement is noted? And again, that's looking at New York and other states that have already shown a decrease in 20% to 30% in their lower test scores from those students. Test failed equals purchase of remedial curriculum and purchase of a retest at, I think it's estimated $30 to $40 per student. So that's a game. Page seven of the PowerPoint presentation, there was, it says CCSS have been adopted by 46 states. We know that's misleading to parents in the community. Yes, maybe 46 states originally did sign on. However, even a year ago, I commented here that 20 to 26 of the original 45 states have pending legislation to either withdraw from Common Core standards or assessments or attempting to back out of the implementation. And the number, I thought, was pretty high. That's half of the states. And I ask why some of the states have changed their minds. Some cite costs to implement, some cite loss of state and local control. But there were a variety of reasons. Last year, there were at least 10 states that I mentioned that were pushing back against the Common Core. To date, six states have either partially or completely withdrawn from the standards or testing requirements, and Ohio is slated very soon to be the seventh. So obviously, there is some controversy on these standards, and I would just like to ask that you present accurate information. Thank you.
I just have one question. We just recently received a compilation of minutes from each of those community meetings. When will they be posted?
We were going to bring them up tonight at our board comments, and then I would assume that they would be...
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, board members. Nearly every school district in the nation seems to want to affirm emphatically that the Common Core aligned test is the best, greatest thing to hit the classroom, the holy grail of tests, the savior of upcoming generations of diverse learners in the U.S. Making this claim of test efficacy to parents and ground-level teachers without documented validity data is unprecedented. I'm quoting Gary Thompson, child development clinician at the Early Life Child Psychology and Education Center in Salt Lake City, Utah, a child psychology, education, and special education legal advocacy clinic. Psychology has been, psychology has a long and storied 150-year history documenting the many abuses that have befallen people when organizations and practitioners play fast and loose with the ethical guidelines associated with testing. What do parents not know about standardized tests and what value they have for children? This is a wake-up call to parents and families, as well as the education community, to the importance of following best-practice ethics and the consequences to the children when those are ignored. Parents are not being told that all tests have limitations in regard to certain children, which may dramatically affect the validity of the numbers and results that, and that have life-altering decisions for their children that may be made on results, based on results with questionable validity. Parents are also being told that accommodations are in place for vulnerable special education children to ensure test results are accurate indicators of their child's performance. Yet there are absolutely no studies to confirm these policymakers' claims. There's no documentation to support those claims, because, as I will quote from Orlean Curla's book, Common Core: The Trojan Horse for Education Reform, they are literally building the airplane, Common Core test and assessments, while it's in the air. We're experimenting with the nation's children, with California's children, and it needs to stop. It's time to take another look at what we're doing with our nation's kids. We have a unique opportunity to make a real difference right here in Elk Grove right now, before it's too late. Let's have another public forum, a fair debate about Common Core, and reassess the astronomical amounts of money that has been and will be spent on an initiative that is untried, untested, and in the assessment of many of the nation's childhood development professionals, cognitive child abuse. So we had a forum last November. It was pretty informative. I think that after a year of the full implementation and testing, the first year of trial testing, test of the test, it's time to have another forum. I actually talked about this, I think, way back in August or September, and Dr. Ladd, you suggested that I speak to Dr. Ladd about that, which I did, and I sent him a request with a statement of what our intention was, and I have not heard back. So now that we have new superintendent in place and...
Your time is up.
...new board members, I would like to ask the board again to consider sponsoring another forum, public forum for us.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
I have no more blue cards for public comment bargaining units.
Nancy Eastman, I'm the Labor Relations Representative for CSEA.
Good evening. You're going to make me sad. President Cox, our board, Superintendent Hoffman, Ms. Hine. Tonight is a night of sad goodbyes and happy hellos. Priscilla and Jeanette, CSEA recognized you both as a significant public servant for our Elk Grove Unified Schoolchildren and their families. Your contribution, your intelligence, your devotion will be everlasting. However, your legacy will be your heartfelt belief in our students and our community. We want you to enjoy all your Tuesdays now. Superintendent Hoffman, it is our pleasure and privilege, on behalf of California School Employees Association 831's 800-plus members, to welcome you back home to Elk Grove Unified. It will be our honor to be serving you and with you in the commitment to the standards of our students and the strong values of a quality public education. We are confident that every student will find their place in our schools. As you had said before, in another matter, you will take everyone along for the ride. CSEA will enjoy the journey together.
You wanted to say something about Mark Sarudi. Well, I thought you were going first.
Okay. I want to thank Mark Sarudi. He came over, and we had a nice conversation about the board policy that's going to be in front of you for the second reading, and we have a better understanding.
I also wanted to mention that we were in negotiations all day today, and it was very productive. It went well. I feel like we got a lot accomplished. Everybody was on task. We had an agenda, and really looking forward to when we meet again on December 2nd to continue the conversation.
Thank you.
Thank you for your kind comments, Mary. Any other bargaining units? Jennifer?
Stand on that side. Okay. Sure. Good evening, President Cox, members of the board, Ms. Hine, and welcome, Mr. Hoffman. This is Jennifer Ballerini. Jennifer is president of AFSMI Local 258. And just in case you didn't know, AFSMI stands for the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees.
You'll be tested later.
You will feel tested soon enough. Welcome, a hearty, hearty welcome from AFSMI. You know, this particular local in AFSMI has been chartered since February of 1940. We predate the existence of the Elk Grove Unified School District. And they'll be celebrating their 75th anniversary in February or early March. We will be sure to invite you all. We have a long and storied past, and we're proud of every minute of it. We represent most of the classified workforce here in the Elk Grove Unified School District. Everybody except our wonderful paraprofessionals and our hard-driving, good-driving bus drivers and mechanics in the transportation department. But we've got everybody else, so it's a little bit of a crazy local, and we kind of like it that way. We like it crazy because we care deeply about the education of the students in this district and the union's role in that process. Most of our members came out of the Elk Grove schools, and many of our members have children and grandchildren in the schools now. We live here. We breathe here. We like it here, and we take great pride in the work that we do here. You've probably heard already, you've probably heard a few people tell you that Elk Grove is different. And in many respects, that is true. But what isn't different, and what I think you'll find to be true here, is the deep commitment that this union and all of the unions here in the district have to the education of children and our role in it, and how proud we are all of it and what we expect out of This is a really interesting time, and a very rare time for this particular school district. It's been a very, very long time since there has been so much turnover on the Board of Directors and a brand-new superintendent to boot. My boss was a Jesuit seminarian, and he likes to talk about how much he compared the E-ching to the words of Thomas Aquinas. Apparently, Thomas Aquinas talked about the point of greatest challenge also being your point of greatest opportunity, and I found that to be true. And I think that that's true for all of us as we engage in this next page of Elk Grove's journey, and we really look forward to it. There's so many changes, not just with the board and you, sir, but the way we fund education now, the way we prioritize budget programs, what the union's roles are in the processes' stakeholders. It's a new world, and that comes with some challenges. For the first time in a long time, there's open debate now at board meetings. Some find that really disconcerting. We need to tell you, we think it's about time. We're talking about the education of children here, and there isn't anything more important than that, making sure that our future, the future of our children is as bright as we can make it, and then selfishly, how they're going to support us in our old age. But it's a very big deal, and it should be openly and roundly and largely debated. And if we have fights about it, okay, that's democracy. That's how it works. That's the only way it does work. When we stay silent, things happen that nobody knows about until it's too late. So we welcome the debate, and we're going to participate in it. You will come to find that, yes, we're a little crazy, but we love this place, and we are deeply committed to its success, to the success of every student and every staff member in this district, and to yours as well, sir, and all of you board members. To President Cox and Ms. Amavisca, thank you for your many, many years of good service. Like CSEA, we hope you'll have much happier Tuesday nights from now on.
At least more choice of what you can do.
And we hope that you'll come back to visit. We pretty much know that you will. Welcome again, sir. Let the games begin. Thanks. There you go.
Thank you, Nancy, Jennifer, and then Ms. Ellis.
It's all a big game anyway, isn't it?
Jennifer, and then Ms. Ellis.
It's all a big game anyway, isn't it? We just all want to be winners. Maggie Ellis, President of Elk Grove Education Association. Chris, for the second time, welcome, now in a more formal setting. I have to say that my first meeting with you, and Cheryl and I both concur, we really enjoyed it. We had a great time. We always have a great time with Mark. But it's nice to see that positive energy and interaction, and, and you get what it's like to be a teacher. You don't, you haven't forgotten. It truly is, in every comment that you made in our meeting, it was evident to us that you know where we're coming from, and that's going to be really important in making a connection with our members and all the other unit's members. You know we're about students, we're about our school sites, we're about family, and so that, that comes across very strongly. I know in every opportunity to have a talk with my membership, they are very excited to have you here. They are very much looking forward to having you come to their school sites and see them, and I know that's something that you do already. And we are a big district, and you're, it's going, I know what it's like. You got a lot of footwork to do. So, welcome to the team, and it is a team, and we look forward to sharing that interaction with you and developing our collaboration. Priscilla and Jeanette, it's been a long time, and change is hard, but change is good, and we know you are a foundation of our district, and you're never really gone, because that's, that's just who we are as a district. You never really leave. You're still part of the community. And though things got tough for a while, we know where your hearts are and will always be, and so I want to thank you for your dedication to our district and to the vision of our district. And lastly, I'm not eliminating you for any reason, or Jeanette and Priscilla for any reason. I have an invitation to school board members for a dinner with CTA and the association. If you are able to attend, I greatly appreciate it, and I hope we will see you all at our superintendent's welcome, and I hope you received your invitations.
Yeah.
We did. We did. Thank you very much. Yeah, we're very nice. Yeah.
It's for Chris.
Yeah. Yeah. We don't get this one.
You don't want it.
But thank you for, for your comments, and, and it has been quite the journey for us, and we're just very blessed to work, to have been part of this community. Yeah. Transparency. Thank you all. Next, we have our presentation on our grade, grade-level reading, if I can read it, grade-level reading Sacramento Reads by Ms. Cherry.
Like 1 million babies each year, Jamie's been born into a low-income family. And since Jamie's mom lacked access to good prenatal care, Jamie's much smaller than And since they won't have access to brain-developing activities found in high-quality childcare, low-income children like Jamie will be two times more likely to experience developmental delays. It probably won't surprise you that by their third birthday, Jamie's been exposed to a lot fewer words than Jordan, a whole lot fewer. And I imagine Jamie's fourth birthday won't be much better. By the time they reach kindergarten, Jamie will have already fallen behind Jordan in language and pre-reading skills by 12 to 14 months. And getting to school on a regular basis will be perhaps Jamie's biggest challenge. Unfortunately, a myriad of health, transportation, and housing problems will cause between 5 and 7 and 1/2 million Jamies to be chronically absent this year. But with summer right around the corner, you'd think Jamie would have plenty of time to catch up with Jordan then. Sadly, summer presents new challenges for Jamie, a mountain of challenges. You see, every summer, Jordan's learning will evolve by a month because of access to libraries, field trips, and camps, while Jamie will lose two months of school learning every summer because good habits such as reading haven't been reinforced. By the time they reach third grade, Jamie will be between two and two-and-a-half school years behind Jordan in critical reading skills. And how much more likely is Jamie to drop out than Jordan because he can't read at a third-grade level? 13 times more likely, and the results of which are frankly catastrophic. Wait just one minute there, folks. The story doesn't end right there. Fortunately for Jamie, and Jordan, and all of us, there's a whole lot of folks out there that believe neither luck, nor lottery, nor zip codes should dictate Jamie's future, who also believe that our schools can't do it alone. Luckily, there are leaders, organizations, and good people out there that are dedicated to believing in a whole lot more. The solution right now is relatively straightforward, if we can commit to four things. Number one, we need to make sure our kids are healthy and ready for school. Number two, we need to ensure they grow up in a word-and-book-enriched environment. Number three, we need to engage them in healthy and educational activities over the summer. Number four, we need to make sure that Jamie attends school every single day, because at the end of the day, you and I both know that lotteries, zip codes, and plain-old dumb luck don't really offer our children's future. We do.
Good evening, President Cox, members of the board, Superintendent Hoffman, and Ms. Heine. No, the story does not end here, and one of the reasons that it doesn't end here is because you and the commitment that you have shown in providing us with $1 million annually to work on on-grade-level reading. This is the first time we have had this type of funds, this type of money, to really combat the problem that we see with on-grade-level reading. And so, first, I would like to thank and commend you for your dedication and ongoing work as we continue the work of on-grade-level reading. Again, as Mark Sarudi said, we ground our work in E4. And if you take a look at not just E4, where we talk about high, high-quality classroom instruction, assessment data, parent involvement, and wellness, and we move from E4 to our strategic goals from our LCAP, you will see that on-grade-level reading fits into every area of our LCAP and of our daily work in Elk Grove Unified School District. Knowing that all of our students must receive high-quality classroom instruction, first starts with reading. Having the appropriate and the proper assessment and data analysis, not just of students so that we can provide ongoing instruction to meet their needs, but also assessment of our programs. Wellness, you might ask yourself, well, how does wellness fit in? Have you ever been the student that was called on in class to read, and you couldn't concentrate on the paragraph that you were going to have to read because you were practicing it before they called your name? Or have you ever struggled with language and not been able to read? Talk about emotionally safe environment, it's huge as far as on-grade-level reading. And of course, parents, family, and community. Our families are our first teachers, and you'll see as we go through the PowerPoint the ongoing work that we're doing with, excuse me, our community, especially the city of Sacramento, the city of Elk Grove, and on-grade-level reading. It's not just an Elk Grove problem, though. Don't get me wrong, it is an Elk Grove problem, but in the United States, only 33% of our children are reading on-grade level, and that's from NAEP assessment. NAEP is one of the few national assessments that we do participate in, only 33%. Also, in the United States, 35% of our 4th graders are performing at the proficient level, again, based on NAEP scores. In the state of California, the great state of California, only 44% of our 3rd graders read on-grade level by the time they leave 3rd grade, that's 2013 CST. In the county of Sacramento, 42%. Elk Grove is doing better than any of the above, but at the same time, only 48% of our 3rd-grade students read on-grade level by the time they leave 3rd grade. Half, less than half. And so, why? Why does it matter? Reading proficiency by the end of 3rd grade is the key indicator to high school success and to college and career success, and statistics show that more than 80% of our students from low-income family miss this crucial mark. Why else does it matter? Falling short of the milestone? Students who don't read on-grade level by the time they leave 3rd grade are four times less likely to graduate by age 19. When you add poverty to the mix, a student is 13 times less likely to graduate on time. Students who don't read proficiently constitute 88% of those students who don't earn a high school diploma, and unfortunately, most of those students don't graduate, and if they do, they're not prepared for college and careers. So, what's our goal? Our goal is not only to ensure that every student does read at or above grade level by the time they leave 3rd grade, but that we continue to show progress in reading proficiency so that our students can read, comprehend, integrate, and apply complex texts, which are definitely needed in secondary education, college, and career success. And so, we thank you this evening for the $1 million annual ongoing commitment to on-grade-level So, you might say, well, that was April 30th, and what have you been doing since then? And we've been doing quite a bit. April 30th was when you allocated the $1 million. On July 29th, we had our first committee meeting. Our committee is made up of classroom teachers, members of CPL, members of Ed Services, and of course, pre-K 6 education. Following that, August 5th, so you'll see we worked through the summer, we had our second committee meeting. On August 26th, we reviewed the plan with EGEA, including an overview of the coaches and specialist positions that we were planning to hire. August 28th, we had a third committee meeting to develop a draft plan. At that meeting, we expanded the committee to add more classroom teachers to our committee. On September 2nd, we reviewed the plan with our elementary leadership. September 9th, with all of our principals. On September 15th, we began developing a job description. Our old reading specialist description was very old, and it included specific comments about open court, so that job description was no longer appropriate to what we were looking for, so we began to develop a new job description. On September 17th, we presented the plan and the timeline to Cabinet. October 29th, requesting to advertise for four FTE of reading coaches, and I'll talk about them a little bit more. On November 5th, presented to Cabinet. November 10th, beginning the candidate selection process, and that process will be very extensive with the help of curriculum and professional learning, our committee members, EGEA, Elementary Education, and of course, Human Resources. On November 18th, that's tonight, it's our presentation to the board, and tomorrow we will have our fourth committee meeting to review the status of our on-grade-level reading So, what is that plan? We took a look at some of the best practices that we have utilized in math generation as well as ESI, based on extensive professional development opportunities for our staff. And looking at that, we know that we need to provide differentiated early literacy professional development opportunities. There are some teachers that might really need to have very, very deep reading instruction. There are some that might need to have, to be retooled, but definitely taking a look at the needs of our teachers and being able to provide specific professional development based on their needs. And of course, working in the area of professional learning communities. What else? We plan to hire four FTE of reading coaches. That would be a position very similar to a reading specialist, but because we are not requiring a reading specialist credential or certification, but somebody that has deep knowledge in the area of reading, the job description calls those people reading coaches. Each of those reading coaches will support one grade level, TKK being one grade level, first grade, second, and third grade. For this year, at least three days of professional learning will be provided to each teacher in TK through 3rd grade. Release time will be provided, and at also, 21 hours of professional learning in the area of early literacy is being provided to our site administrators. Also, to increase the efficacy of our reading coaches, they will provide small-group instruction to approximately eight to 10 teachers at a time, and research in the best practices on educating adults shows that small-group instruction works best. They'll spend approximately 50% or half of their time providing professional development to their grade level, and the other 50% of their time will be used in providing direct support to the site, to the administrators, classroom teachers, as well as to parents. And so, what does that look like in Elk Grove Unified School District? Based on Seabeds October, we had 778 transitional kindergarten students, which equated to 34 stu, teachers, 3,882 kindergartens, 161. You can go down the list. Basically, each of our four reading coaches would be responsible for providing support and professional development to approximately 200 teachers. What we're looking at, again, four reading coaches, so as we talk about our budget, that's approximately $400,000 allocated for the reading coaches. The release time, again, three days of release time, approximately $500,000. There's about $1,000 provided to each site. Many of them are looking at specific programs that we've used in the past, whether it's SIPS or Making Words, Making Big Words, so there'll be a slight allocation for sites. Also, additional stipends or other types of professional learning opportunities that we will provide, and the 21 hours of professional learning for our administrators comes at no additional cost. That's thank you, what we do with Ed Services and Curriculum and Professional Learning. But we don't want this money to be looked at in isolation because that's not how we work. Again, CPL, we work closely with them, and not just the professional development that they're offering for our administrators, but they provide a tremendous amount of professional development in the development in the area of early literacy to our teachers, as well as to our coaches. We're looking at the pre-K professional development or learning opportunities. All of our pre-K teachers go through additional professional learning opportunities. This year, we also thank you to the board, have parent involvement funds. Knowing, again, that our parents are our first teachers, we're working very closely with our parents to provide additional support and education and learning to our parents so that they can help our students. Our summer school funds, again, not in isolation. When we look at our summer school funds, and we'll have a presentation about that after this one, in the area of elementary education, we focused on early literacy, which students needed early literacy instruction. And then, of course, our gate allocation. All of these allocations should work hand in hand so that we can provide a comprehensive program to our students. What else? One of the major initiatives that we have been involved in for about the past five years is the on grade level reading program, Sacramento Reads. Recently, the mayor of Sacramento, Kevin Johnson, asked the United Way to take over Sacramento Reads. And, you know, there's some real benefits to that. Number one, it's nonpartisan, and nobody knows how to raise money more than a nonprofit, and the United Way is one of those top nonprofits. So we're working very, very closely with the United Way as far as developing specific programs in the areas of early literacy, on grade level reading, working with absenteeism and working with preschool programs. At the same time, we're recruiting reading partners. Reading partners currently work in the city of Sacramento, they're a volunteer group. They work in nine schools right now, we're asking them to assist us next year in 13 Title I elementary schools. They are gearing up to be able to provide one-on-one tutoring with us in our Title I schools. Very, very, really good community partners, and when you go back and take a look at the data that they have, and I was reading online earlier again today, 72% of the students that participate in reading partners really close the achievement gap with their on grade level reading partners, a tremendous program. We're also coordinating our efforts with after-school programs. Many of our schools have strong after-school programs, and making sure that during the literacy or instructional hour that we're focusing in the area of reading, bridging our pre-K to K model. In that area, we're making sure that our kindergarten teachers are aware of the skills that our pre-K students come with, as well as what our pre-K students are lacking, so that we can immediately build a bridge to what students know or need to know in pre-K to what they know and need to know in kindergarten. Facilitating and working with secondary education to build a bridge, a stronger bridge, between pre-K 6 and middle school, and developing and assessing the Elk Grove Unified School District's on grade level reading program. So again, as we go back to our four strategic goals, it's not only important that we assess our students, but that we assess our program for success at the same time, and that we're nimble enough to make adjustments to our program as needed. Because the more you read, the more things you'll know, and the more that you learn, the more places you'll go, Dr. Seuss. At this time, I'll answer any questions from the board.
That was excellent. Very, very exciting that we're able to move forward in this area, and I think your introduction really set the stage for why this is so important for us to focus on as a school district. And I'll open it up to questions and reserve my, rest of my comments, and do you want to start at this end this time, Mr. Perez?
Thank you.
Excellent report.
Thank you.
Can you mention prenatal doctors and other health issues?
Oh, from the video?
Yes.
They talked about things like asthma, prenatal care, dental care. Dental care is a huge one, that's one of the reasons that the law mandates that we provide dental assessments for our students in pre-K, or require them.
Also, within my community, just recently, within the last month, there had been three Sacramento B identified 95828, the highest homicides in Sacramento County. So these kids, these students that are coming to this geographical area and in our district are traumatized, they're emotionally, they don't have a safe environment, I think.
I live in, like, 9528.
Okay. So you live in one of the most highest homicide area, according to Sacramento B, I'm referring to them, their report. Also, so what in the area of mental health are we also helping these students within our K to 3? Is there an issue like that, or?
You know, working with Associate Superintendent Mark Sirudi and his group, the PBIS work that we do, all of the additional supports that we have in our district as far as mental health that we have not had before. Keep in mind, also, when we work, Project Grow is one of the programs that we have working with the majority, five of our Title I schools in that area, to make sure that we have counselors in the schools. So I think for the first time, we have a tremendous amount of resources in our schools that we haven't had in the past.
So also, okay, question number two, do we have a trend study by schools and that we could see?
Yeah, thank you so much for asking. In the Elk Grove Unified School District, we have schools where 30%, of the students are reading on grade level by the time they leave 3rd grade, and we have schools that 80% of their students are reading on grade level by the time they leave 3rd grade. And so, we run that entire gamut, and we do keep data on that.
So how far back do we have study?
The latest CST data, 2013.
I mean, do we have from 2008?
Oh, absolutely, yes.
We got back, okay, way back, okay. Is $1 million enough for this issue?
No, it's not enough.
Okay, what can we do as board members?
You know, um...
What more can we do?
I know that it's a zero-sum game, and, you know, we all have competing interests, but we're talking right now, in this presentation, in this plan, about four reading coaches to work with, 772 teachers. Ideally, we'd have at least one reading expert in every elementary school in our district.
Partners, do we have partnership with libraries, SACB, so they could give us, or maybe phonies or whatever?
You know, working more on that, I think that's a critical part of LCAP and what we need to make sure we do, but I do appreciate the work that we're doing with the United Way, because they come with a variety of different resources and other mechanisms that we might not have, and they're pulling in all those. I sit actually on the group for on grade level reading, and Mr. Carl Steinhour is on the group for attendance, so absolutely.
What about first five? Are we helping or working with first five at the county level to deal with some of these nutritional issues?
We do. Director Bob Rowe attends the first five meetings, is a strong part of our pre-K program, and we absolutely do.
So that's what you call early intervention, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Parent training, that's another thing, I'm going to dwell on that again, like always. Parent training of the importance of reading. Like I mentioned, the last, or maybe within the last two meetings, I attended Lincoln Elementary School in Napa Unified School District. They had a pre-K program, bilingual, bicultural instructor, their excellent model program, which they emphasized early education training, not only for the students in word recognition, colors, et cetera, et cetera, but parents, how important parents play a part in reading programs, that they should read to these students and children every evening, X amount, 15 to half an hour every evening, take them to the library, et cetera, et cetera.
I think if you remember from the video, students of low income come by the time they're in first grade, three, 30 million fewer words they've been exposed to.
Right, I like that introduction. Last, or this last one. Is there a possibility, you mentioned you want to network with reading partners, can we use high school students in the classroom to read? Also, ROP as student positions, or is that possible?
You know, really, at some of our elementary schools already, high school students that are on an early out or late start Wednesday or whatever, many of them partner with our elementary schools, and some of their students do come over and participate in reading with our students. Of course, we could always do more.
Right, I'm thinking like career paths, and students who want to pursue teaching instructors or teacher aides, things like that, tradition, to transition into a career of education. See, you know, that's another possibility, another, or maybe academy, that's what I'm thinking.
We also have a partnership with CSUS, and many of their students come to some of our most needy schools, and they do participate in tutoring our students, especially in our after-school program. So that way, students aren't taken out of the classroom during regular instruction, but they work with them after school.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much, it was excellent.
Thank you, thank you.
We used to have some future teachers of America Clubs on some of our high school campuses, do we still have that? No, okay, it's gone by the way of, okay. To answer Mr. Perez's, one of his questions about parent training, one thing that really opened my eyes, and this was a long time ago, but I know we're still doing it, is out at the jail, we have parent training for cellmates. And I went in and I visited one of the classes, and it was teaching the inmates how to read to their kids. And so, you're talking about low income, or socioeconomic, or those in the zip codes, you know, and so we're out there, this is us, we're out there with our adult ed program, teaching these people how to read. And that really opened my eyes about, a long, long time ago, so I've always been an advocate for that. Excellent report. I really enjoyed it, it's a lot of good, the numbers are disturbing still, you know, even with the 48% of our 3rd graders, you know, and again, you want to say why. And I know that we're doing all the right things and at all the right places, and it's hard, we've got two people coming in all the time, and I don't know, if you were to follow students that were from, in Elk Grove Unified, for all of their, you know, from the pre-K to 3rd grade, are they still in this 48%? Or do we, can we trace that?
I have not traced that.
Yeah, I don't know if we could do that or not, but...
You know, I think a big part of the issue has to do with our teacher preparation programs. I can tell you that I went to SAC State, graduated from teacher preparation program, and at no time, I could not come out of that program and teach reading, and I'm not by myself in that. And so, we have a group of folks that came through like I did. Then we went to open court reading, and much of open court reading is you open the manual, you follow the instructions, so much of it is very scripted. During that same time, we went to class size reduction in our primary classes, but not in our intermediate classes, and many teachers, veteran teachers moved from 4th, 5th or 6th grade down to the small class sizes. So when you put all of those things together, as well as the tremendous budget cuts that we've been under, it's no wonder why we really have to go back, and the majority of this money you'll see is for professional development.
I'm really glad to see that, I'm really glad to see, and, you know, a million dollars is not enough, and I don't know if 10 millions would be enough, but we always want more, and I don't know, we can always, you know, lobby the legislator and do whatever does it, we're always doing to get more money for the funding from schools. So it's never enough, but it's, those numbers are still disturbing. I'm glad to see what we're doing, and it's great, and we can always do better, and it seems like we are always doing better, but then there's always more stumbling blocks that we have to come across. And I, you know, my hats go off to teachers, I could never, never be a teacher, I have a hard time helping my grandson with his homework, you know, want to strangle him, though, but, but really, and my hat goes off to the teachers, they're just wonderful people, and they're, they're so great. I think that's all I have to say, it is an excellent report, and I'm glad to see what we're doing, all the right stuff, so, thank you.
I thought you were describing me when you asked about the students that struggles to read. I didn't start reading on grade level until I hit the middle school, so certainly I was one of the statistics that was headed to prison, but somewhere along the lines, I was saved, so, very good work, and, you know, if it was up to me, I'd give you 10 times more what you received. Thank you for the work that you've done so far with this limited amount of funds, and that first video really was powerful, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, again, a very good report, just a couple of notes I wanted to make. You know, it certainly appears that we are building a really good infrastructure in our district, there's no question about that, just looking at the presentation tonight. Some of the concerns I have, though, when we have this infrastructure, obviously, we have to have the professional development, we have to have the instructions to deliver the message. I'm curious as to some of the curriculums we're going to have, will it be of interest of our elementary kids, the TK or to the first to the 3rd grade, whether that has interest and rigor to it that will entice our children to want to grab out and read? I think that's a key component. We building the infrastructure, and then what type of curriculum are we going to have? And how rigorous will be that that child wants to come back? I know for one, coming up as well, struggled to go on, to come to grade level reading, and a lot of it, and I can reminisce on it, was boring to me. I struggled, and I didn't like to read. So I think as a district, if we can lead that path, and seeing what we can do to really attract these kids that are struggling there, because kids are like sponges, they can come along and they can really grasp things if we have the right curriculum out there, and keeping it as rigorous as possible. But in that fantastic report.
I agree, thank you.
You know, at some point in time, Donna, we can have a discussion about the lack appropriation of teachers on behalf of the colleges and universities, they missed the mark. I think it's going to become a bigger issue as we deal with Common Core, as we deal with the requirements under LCAP, that the people whom we are hiring, both administrative as well as teachers, are not prepared to do the job that they're going to be expected to do today. So that is an issue that you identified, it's one for another time. Bunch of questions. First one, based on your predictions, when will the plan be available for review and comment?
So the plan that I showed you today is what we're working on right now. We expect to hire our first set of reading specialist, I'm sorry, reading coaches before we go off for winter break, and start providing that professional development sometime, probably in February, hoping to get all of our teachers through before the end of the school year, and then, of course, going back to progress monitor the plan itself.
Okay, and when I reference the plan, I mean, there needs to be something that is identifying what the causes are, what the remedial actions are going to be that we propose to take, how we will know whether or not we meet the targets, when will that piece be ready?
I think that it'll be ready, again, as we go along. We already know the causes. We know that, that especially with our lower income students in our Title I schools, that we don't have the foundations. When you talk about phonemic awareness, when you talk about strong phonics instruction, when you talk about those building blocks to reading and getting to comprehension, we know that, that many of our students are very, very weak in that area. And again, when you talk about the colleges and the universities, only about 20% of the students graduating from the universities nationwide feel that they have the skills to be able to teach reading. And so, the causes are, you know, I mean, we look at those every day when we look at assessment, that's the reason that we're looking at a specific grade level to have each of our reading coaches work with. So instead of one reading coach working with TK123, they're working with one grade level to be able to closely narrow the needs, continue the data analysis that we need, narrow down to the instructional strategies that they need to provide. And so, as we're going, that plan is being generated at the, or we're monitoring the plan as we go along.
Okay. But I think it goes without saying that we have, we have a lot of quality staff, directors, associates, teachers, who understand what the reading needs are of kids, but it's also a reality that we have children six hours a day, but that's not even six hours of instruction, and they go home to an environment that we have no control over. And how, how are we going to attack the piece that has a tremendous amount of influence on whether or not children achieve? Because we have a lot of children in our schools, as well as everywhere else, who come from the quote "better" zip codes, who come with the same presenting problems because of the lack of parent intervention. And, and there's a lot of reasons why parents don't have the skills or in... there's a lot of reasons why parents don't have the skills or interest in being responsible for their own children. But unless that piece is addressed, we can spend ten million, we can spend a hundred million, and we'll be back here from ten years from now, talking about the same problem, because there is no school that is going to change the behaviors of the children all by themselves. It isn't going to happen.
No, I absolutely agree. And that's why I talked about even the parent involvement funds that we have. Each of our principals have to develop and turn into a parent involvement plan. And that parent involvement plan has to be specific. In the elementary division, sixty percent of their funds have to go directly to what will best support parents to support their students. We know that many schools think that parent volunteers is like the be-all and end-all of parent engagement. But many of our schools in their plans are writing in specific days where they have parents and students come in, and they run a homework club, not just for students, but for families. You know, there, we're having many, many educational nights put on by our, talk about our teachers and the hard work and dedication put on by our teachers. There are some things that are outside of our control. But as we continue to work with outside groups such as the United Way, and working with the library, bringing back things like bookmobiles, making books accessible to students, you know, if we can, there are so many things we would like to do with parents. We know we can't do them all, but as much as we can provide education to parents on the needs of their students, and then what we do during the day, but offering summer school and extended day programs, and after-school programs, you know, will we ever get to a hundred percent? I would like to say that we would. But even, as I said, we have between thirty and eighty percent. So and even in our most successful schools, we still don't have a hundred percent of our students reading on grade level.
Okay. It seems like the plan's evolving. At some point in time, will there, will there be a format that shows how all the various elements that you've discussed are integrated, like GATE and summer school, parent involvement, after-school, all, all the components, how they relate to one another, so we can understand what is working and what is not working, and, and what we may have to attend to? Because, you know, see, and I know, I'm gonna make, I'm gonna make a comment that is just so out of place right now, and I, and maybe I shouldn't make it, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna make it anyway. We do, from, from where I sit, we do a lot of good work. And what I have kind of, kind of likened it to, a lot of times, is that we have a lot of fingers, and they're not attached to anything. And, and, and a strategic plan would go a long way towards bringing all that we do together, so that everybody has that understanding of the purpose of what it is that they're working on, how it relates to, to other, other factors, and, and what their role is in that. Because, and I know you're, you, I know you well, you would never stand up and say that you're going to do this job alone, because there's too many, there's too many factors that impact on it. It's only one component. But we also do know, and I really, you know, appreciate the fact that we're taking a concerted approach, is that if kids can't read, they're not going to learn anything. Real simple. Real simple. But, you know, we, we do need to focus on the parent involvement component. You know, I said this in a, in a couple of other arenas, and I'd like to just really fully discuss it at some other point in time. But the concern African-American parents really address the issue of personal responsibility. They, they are the first to recognize that perhaps all the curriculum is not culturally sensitive, that it's not meeting the needs of all the kids from, from where those kids enter school. But they also say it is our responsibility, and our children's responsibility, to take advantage of what the school provides and benefit from that. And that's the piece that, that I would really like to see really strengthen in, in the, in the, in the approach that's being taken with those parent involvement funds, that we're able to help parents learn that it is their responsibility to ensure that their children are prepared. And there's so many simple things that we've all done with our own children. You go to grocery store, you read, you read the boxes, you know, you, you require them to read every night. I mean, there's, there's so many simple things that can have a dramatic impact. But I know a lot of work's being done, and, and I do appreciate it. And it seems like this has a specific focus. I would hope that our slow learners are part of that focus, because we have such a large number of kids who, who have trouble learning, and, and we, and a lot of those children do have parents that are involved, they're still slow learners. And, and the way in which we do a lot of things don't necessarily allow us to provide the support to them that we need to provide. So, thank you, Donna.
One and another reasons why extended learning opportunity is very important.
I just want to make, excuse me, one comment, too. My meetings with the State Board of Education, California and the country has its same problem. Make no mistake about this reading issue we have. And the long-range plan, I know in California, they're working with the colleges, CSU, UC Systems, in developing better teachers. We haven't changed our profile in teachers coming out of college to be teachers, not their fault. But we're living in a different society today, a different world, so to speak. And I think that's, we have to recognize that. That's part of our problem. So there's, there's a lot of components in that, that part of it. And that's why they feel that this Common Core is really going to help us to down the line of being more creative. Thank you.
Good comment. Very good comments by board members, very, an excellent presentation. I think, as I'm hearing the comments and your responses, I think this is actually what the beauty of the El Cap is supposed to be, is that we are allowed to integrate funds with a focus, and having multiple approaches to the focus on reading, because it is key to almost everything for our students. And from our summer school funds, to our professional development, to even technology, I would think, to our parent involvement, to be able to have these funds all work for the same goal. I mean, that's something we've been able to access before, as everything's been categorically distributed. So I see that as a real positive. Putting it all together, like Mr. Fortina said, in a strategic way is, is the biggest, biggest challenge, to make sure that we do meet those, all those needs with all the, with all the advantage of having the multiple ways. We also have to make sure that, that we're going, all going in the same direction with efficiency, too. And I think the comments on teacher education is important, because it, you realize your audience, we have great teachers, but you really need that professional development right now. We aren't having that from the teacher education programs at the degree that we need it with new technology, and with Common Core, and with the, the statistics that you've shown us on, on our, on our students of most need. Engaging parents is really key, and also the, Mr. Madison, the engaging curriculum, you know, that's, that's really an important part for, for students and how that's presented. And I know this just segues right into our next topic on summer school, because increased instructional time is huge for students that don't have those opportunities from our other, from some of our more affluent students. So with that, I think you're up here, St. though.
Thank you.
Do you need a drink of water?
I am going to grab a drink of water.
Thank you. And so, Ms. Penna and Ms. Cherry are going to give us our update on our summer school programs at both our elementary and secondary level.
Thank you, and good evening, Mrs. Cox, members of the board. Welcome to Superintendent Hoffman, and good evening to Ms. Heine. So I'll start by telling you I have no video. I have no quotes from Dr. Seuss. But what I do have is some incredible news about the success of the most comprehensive summer school program that we've been able to implement in our district in many, many years. And it certainly benefited thousands of students. So Donna and I are here to do a little bit of bragging and informing. We were very grateful to the board for your vision and for your leadership in approving the summer school extended day program on April 22nd. And your approval was in the amount of $3.2 million that went toward program development and implementation, not only of our summer school, but also of intercession and extended day learning. So that $3.2 million is to support extended learning opportunities for our students in elementary and in secondary throughout this year, until the end of this academic year in May. Tonight, we will be talking mostly about summer school, so some facts here. We started our first secondary summer school on June 2nd, elementary a couple of days later on June 4th, and elementary modified traditional on June 20th. So we worked very quickly. There was a very fast turnaround between board approval and summer school intercession program implementation. But I need to give kudos to every division sitting in this room tonight, because we came together to be able to collaborate, and to be able to plan and implement a program that had tremendous results. And so I thank all of my cabinet colleagues. I thank others in the room, our directors, who helped make this possible. This is a theme. You may recognize this, all right? And you'll see that we are, we are showing you our E4 educational vision. When we talk about any of our district's initiatives, we need to ensure that our district's initiatives align with our mission and our educational vision. And we need you to know that our planning and implementation are deliberate and purposeful, with the goal of producing what you see up there, college and career-ready graduates. As Donna showed you, her third-grade reading initiative, on-grade-level reading initiative, and what I'm going to show you, the summer school extended day program, tick off all of our strategic goals, because clearly, they involve high-quality classroom instruction and curriculum. They involve assessment, and assessment used not only to plan our program, but also to guide our program, involves our students being able to have an opportunity to learn in a culturally responsive, physically and emotionally safe environment. And of course, it involves our family members. And in this way, you will see it involves our family members, not only at the outset, and working with us to select educational opportunities for their students, but also at the end, when we surveyed our family members, and we will use that information as we plan for next year's program.
So although we might not have any Dr. Seuss quotes, we do have quotes from several authorities as far as extended learning goes. And we know that more and more, especially with Common Core and the rigors of instruction today, that the conventional six-hour-a-day, one-hundred-and-eighty-days-of-school is not enough for many of our students, disadvantaged or not. At the same time, we talk often about the summer learning loss that takes place. And the RAND Corporation is one of the largest researchers of that. But knowing that many of our students really need to continue to stay in summer school, so not only can they reduce their summer learning loss, but we can boost their academic achievement. And Johns Hopkins University takes a look at, again, our summer programs and the importance of them, gaining advanced knowledge, skill development. But to take you back to something that Mr. Perez said a few moments ago, summer schools and extended day programs are also very critical as far as reducing crime. The crime after school, summer school, when parents are working and students are free and at home, those are prime times for teenage and children crime. And so we know that summer school is also a wonderful opportunity for us to help keep our students in our neighborhoods safe. So a summer school overview. Again, summer school, for the first time, was offered at every school in our district. We do use the term intercession when we're talking about our year-round schools. We served 7,298 students just in the summer school program. That does not include intercession. And overwhelmingly, we had positive reviews. We sent out a survey to our parents, our teachers, our administrators, and of course, our students, and the reviews were positive. We'll talk about some of those at the end. So what did an elementary program look like? Again, focusing on early literacy, knowing that our number-one priority was to address the needs of our students not reading on grade level by the end of third grade. Also, early numeracy. When we're working, you take a look at Common Core math. If a student can't read on grade level, they are definitely not going to be able to do Common Core math. So early numeracy was one of our focus areas, as well as enrichment. Students in our traditional programs attended summer school four hours a day for sixteen days, that's sixty-four instructional hours. And we broke it down to provide two hours of English language arts, an hour and fifteen minutes of math, and forty-five minutes of enrichment. Again, I talked about the priorities, K3, low reading and low math scores being first. Twenty-six of our schools, schools that are on traditional or modified traditional, serving from thirty-seven students in summer school, for some of our really small schools, to up to one-hundred-and-fifty-four. And many of them served more students with their Title One funds. So here, I'm talking about the students being served with summer school funds. Elementary, we served 2,429. And we did provide professional development to all of our teachers before summer school and extended day programs began. When we talk about intercession, again, that's at our year-round schools, thirteen year-round schools. Many of them will have intercession. Some schools are precluded from an intercession because of space available. And in those schools, we have stronger extended day programs. But if you do have an intercession program, it's primarily two weeks of the four-week off-track time, usually offered twice a year for each of those tracks, which would be eight intercessions altogether, four hours a day, four and a half days, four hours, I'm sorry, four days a week, four and a half hours per day.
So each secondary site's summer school program operated in June of 2014. The middle schools offered enrichment opportunities for students entering eighth grade. You're going to say, well, what did you do with the incoming seventh graders? And I'll get to that. It's called Jump Start, and we'll, we'll talk about it a little bit later on. The reason that we could not offer summer school for those students who were transitioning from sixth to seventh is because of the year-round calendars. Many of the students were still in their elementary schools and hadn't promoted at the time. And so we decided that summer school, in terms of the traditional summer school, would be for those students transitioning between seven and eight. And then the Jump Start, which we actually offered in August, would be for those students coming in as new seventh graders. Our high schools offered primarily credit recovery courses. And as you'll see, there was a great need for credit recovery. But we also offered honors and pre-AP enrichment courses at many of our schools. And those opportunities to build that, that bridge to honors and AP will be expanded this next year. In addition, when you have traditional scheduled schools, students only have opportunity to take six, six classes during their school year, as opposed to eight. And so if a student wants to participate in band, or wants to take a special elective, very often, there's not room in the schedule for that student to do that. So this provided an opportunity for kids at traditional scheduled schools to accelerate, to take something during the summer that would clear a space, to allow them to take elective enrichment, participate in band, participate in a specialized program, and also accelerate in completing their graduation requirements. At the secondary level, excluding Jump Start, we served 4,869 students, 1,191 at middle school, and 3,678 at high school. So, middle school Jump Start. There's a great need to ensure that there is a transitional opportunity and orientation for students who are leaving sixth grade and entering seventh grade for the first time. So in August, each of our middle schools offered this multi-day opportunity for kids. And there were actually three objectives in mind. And the first was to acquaint students with the middle school experience. The second was to allow the students to meet others from different feeder elementary schools, because obviously, they'd come up usually within one feeder elementary school, and all of a sudden, you have multiple schools feeding the middle school. So to start making friends early, and also to provide instruction and skills to support success. Essentially, what happens at Jump Start is that kids attend a shortened schedule. They learn, for example, how to go through the lunch line to get their lunch. They go through the gymnasium. First time, they're going to actually be dressing for PE. They are in classes where there are lessons taught about study skills, ways to support their success once they get into middle school. So we actually had 1,696 students served across our nine campuses. And if you add those numbers to our summer school numbers, secondary served 6,565 total students this summer.
Our elementary outcomes, there is a typo in that top line. We served 2,429 students. Average class size, about thirteen students per class. Again, these were primarily intervention courses. And we know that students learn best in small groups. So about thirteen students was our average. When we took a look at our attendance, sixteen days, fifteen-point-four was our average, the average number of days attended. And then, our attendance rate, eighty... And then our attendance rate, 89.8. That's lower than we would like to see. But again, we had a really quick turnaround. People had already scheduled vacations. And so we're very, very pleased with our outcomes. We're pleased with the numbers of students that we served. And we know that that 89.8 is a benchmark. And we'll work on having higher attendance next year. And then again, the other outcome was our pre- and post-assessment in both areas of English Language Arts and Math. You can see from the numbers here, this is average percent correct. We had phonemic awareness assessment for our kindergarten students in grades one through five. We used fluency assessments, the number of words per minute a student reads accurately. And in our math, kindergarten through fifth grade, we utilized our Go Math assessments. And so you see pretty much across the board, we did see success in students learning from their pre- to post-test.
So our middle school outcomes, you can see that the average days, average number of days students were scheduled to attend was 12.4 of those, the average days attended, 11.6. Our average attendance rate was 91%, which is a little bit less than what our daily rate is. And again, I believe it's because we, actually, 91% we need to work on. But I think that we did have vacations scheduled as well because this was sort of late. Average hours of education that middle school students received is 44.1. We did make a decision as a secondary group not to issue credits for middle school courses. However, as we're really looking toward next year, we are going to, there's a strong desire to change that. We wanted it to be more of an enrichment experience as opposed to a credit recovery experience. However, there is a need, that we found out, to issue those credits, especially for those kids that are on the bubble regarding promotion. We can use this, obviously, as an incentive for students to go to summer school to gain some credits and obviously, ensure their promotion. So that is something that we are going to be changing. Jump Start, again, 1,696 incoming seventh graders. And credits are not issued for Jump Start. High school, 3,678 students. We offered two sessions at each school. And the reason that that is significant is that at each session, a student could earn five credits. So if a student wanted to complete an entire course during the summer, they could do that because we had two sessions, separate sessions scheduled. The average number of days of each session was 17, of which 16.2 were attended. Actually, higher attendance rate at high school, 92%. The average hours of education, 78.1. But what is truly phenomenal is the total number of credits earned this summer, 20,717 credits, which equates to 5.6 average credits per student. Our grade distribution was almost identical to what we see during the regular school year. So you know, if you worry that summer school's easier or, you know, less rigorous, we didn't see that. We took a look at our grade distribution for the regular school year, and we see a similar breakdown. The no-grade would be those honors and AP boot camp classes. Those were experiential as opposed to being offered for credit.
We did have the opportunity to survey our administrators, teachers, parents, and students. And you'll see the numbers of respondents. And we asked questions about satisfaction with our summer school program, about student achievement, course offerings, as well as teacher training. So a large number of respondents. And if you want to know what they said, 100% of our administrators thought students and parents were satisfied. Some interesting facts up here. 94% of our elementary school students indicated that they had fun. 90% of our secondary students reported that it was a positive experience. When you take a look at student growth, again, 100% of our administrators thought students made positive growth. Students themselves, 89 to 91% of the elementary school students thought they improved in both reading and language arts and math. And 92% of the secondary students met their objective as far as credit recovery, acceleration, or extra support. 96% of our teachers thought that students made positive growth. And parents were very satisfied with our summer programs. So some suggestions that we've had, the administrators, suggestions from them was to allow more planning time, to standardize the assessment district-wide, as well as to be able to increase communication to our parents as well as our students, and to have that communication in a timely manner. From our teachers, they wanted to change the assessments that we were providing, excuse me, provide longer program, increase communication, and allow more planning time. Our students, elementary, wanted more fun activities, more field trips, and more math. And our secondary students wanted longer breaks, lunches, more fun, and to provide better food. Our parents, exactly, just what you expect. Our parents are looking forward to increased communication, offering a variety, a greater variety of courses, and to be able to expand the program to more students, more days, more time. So our next steps for elementary, again, to be offered at all of our elementary schools for, oh, I'm sorry, extended day elementary. So again, keeping in mind that we have summer school funds to be expended through the end of May. And so many of our elementary schools are offering extended day programs. And again, the same focus. It might sound repetitive, but we know what our needs are. Early literacy, early numeracy, and the continued call for enrichment. And in many cases, our enrichment programs are disguised learning. They're still about teaching literacy and numeracy, but in a way that appears to be more fun so that students can be more engaged.
In order to plan for a comprehensive extended day program at the secondary level, we brought all of the principals in, and we identified common priorities. And these priorities will be applied as we offered extended day learning at all of our schools through May of 2015. Obviously, we still need credit recovery in order to ensure that students are able to make up those courses and those credits required for graduation. Along the theme of graduation, we need to ensure Casey preparation. And we will offer that during extended day. Based on LCAP and based on our students' need, we'll provide support for our targeted groups, our EL students, our low-income students, and our foster youth. We will have enrichment opportunities, and we will have tutoring. And again, it was a very rich dialogue. It was a wonderful opportunity. We had funds. We could actually build a model. And this model is being implemented now at each of our secondary schools throughout the district. So for next year, we appreciate the $3.2 million ongoing. And we will start earlier, very clearly, by forming a summer school committee in January of 2015 to ensure a comprehensive and coordinated approach to our program development and implementation. And obviously, we'll utilize our experiences from this year, our student outcomes, as well as our survey feedback. And we'll also include general education and special education program planning within our dialogue. The stakeholder suggestions that we receive for program courses and activities, we will certainly take into consideration. You know, one of the things that we did hear loudly and clearly from the feedback was the need for increased communication. And again, I think that was because of the shortened time that we had from approval to implementation. So we need to develop and implement a comprehensive communication approach. At the elementary level, Donna will lead the group in establishing a focus on administering assessments at elementary. And we did not administer assessments at secondary. And therefore, we need to determine what those assessment options are at the secondary level. There certainly was an assessment of how many credits were earned. There certainly is an assessment of how many more students passed Casey. But we also need to look at other measurement factors. So that concludes our summer school extended day report. And we're happy to take any questions that you have.
Thank you. Again, another excellent report and definitely impressive that you were able to do this. I think it was a six-week turnaround when you really look back at the time that the money was allocated and the time that summer school, one of the summer schools started, the traditional summer school. But the expansion to intercession and extended day is huge in increasing student achievement. I will take comments or questions from the board at this time. And we start with you, this time.
Thank you. First question. With the $3.2 million, was the majority of those dollars personnel dollars? And with respect to the distribution of those dollars, were there discretionary budgets for principals who operated program or not?
There was limited money for discretionary. We wanted to ensure, there was some, yes. But I mean, obviously, if you're teaching, and I'll speak to secondary. So if you're teaching credit recovery courses, you're going to use the materials and the textbooks that we utilize through the regular school year. We wanted to make sure that we maximize course options for our students. And therefore, most of the money was channeled into personnel, teaching personnel. Obviously, there were support personnel on campus as well. But to answer your question, yes, most of it was personnel-related.
For the elementary division, absolutely. The majority of it was used on personnel. Each school had a small amount of money per student for supplies and materials. We had, other than teachers and administrators, we had campus supervisors, yard duty supervisors, clerical support and that type of, but 95% of it at least used for...
At the elementary level, do principals have any flexibility with respect to how they implement a program at their site? Or is everybody pretty much on the same page with respect to what has to be achieved and how they're going to achieve it?
They had some flexibility, but in some areas, they didn't. For instance, they had to start on the specific day that we calendared. They had to have four and a half hours per day of instruction. They utilized primarily the Go Math materials during the day. They did have some leeway as far as the instructional material used in English Language Arts, but it had to be all Common Core-based. So they had some flexibility, but there were some things that were specifically prescribed.
Since we're looking at some very specific reasons for having summer school and extended school year, both, well, for both levels. And we know the skills people have to bring with them so that our objectives can be achieved with the children. Is there flexibility in selecting the teachers who come forward? I know it's a sensitive question, but it's, to me, it's an important question. If we're going to identify a need, and we're going to spend dollars to meet the need, then what goes hand-in-hand with that? Because it's, in addition to everything we're doing, we don't have the time to teach people. Do we have flexibility in who we select?
We definitely have some flexibility because this was the first year of summer school. But as we move into next year, there's some specific contract language that says that if you taught summer school this year, then somebody else has first priority next year. So there is some specific language in our contract with EGA that specifies so that you're not, some teachers don't feel like they're not being chosen or you're always choosing the same people for summer school over and over again.
I recognize that need for fairness in providing additional compensation to people. And I also recognize the importance of ensuring that we have the right people in the right classrooms. And so if we need to address that at some point, maybe, maybe we need to focus on that.
At the secondary level, it's a little bit easier because the person has to be credentialed to teach the subject that they're teaching. And so obviously, there is that level of preparation and experience that comes with holding that credential. The jobs are offered first to our unit members, to our EGE members. I will tell you that we did have to go outside of the district this summer to adequately staff many of these summer school programs. And that, again, could be because people had vacations scheduled. And so obviously, if we start earlier this year, we think we're going to attract more of our own teachers.
Yeah, and I'm not going to ask you a question, just going to make a statement. And part of the reason could be the fact that we pay such a minimal amount of compensation to the teachers who work the summer school programs and the intercessions, just like we have a problem getting substitutes on a daily basis because we haven't raised the rate in over 15 years. And I know that's being addressed. But when it comes to summer, if we want to, quote, "attract the best", then we need to pay for them. Oh, and just as a grandparent piece of me, I know my grandson Jacob goes to Albani. And I can say unequivocally, Jacob and all of his friends, who I know very, very well, all really enjoyed the Jump Start opportunity. They just felt that having the time onsite before school started was a good entree for them. And so they were really relaxed the first day. And one word you've mentioned in the evaluation piece, and I have shared this with Melanie Dobson, and I'm sure it could be said for other areas, but I have a closer relationship there because of Jacob. They have fun. They have fun every day. And that's in the regular school year, too. You know, they have, every day is a fun day at school. And that's the attitude that permeates through for all the children. So the Jump Start program is crucial, and the fact that kids have fun is crucial also. Thank you.
Yeah, I really don't have any questions. I'm just tickled to death we're able to fund it and have a summer school program that's really helping a lot of kids. So hopefully, this year will come, when not a sense of time, we'll be able to prepare a little bit better. Thank you.
I did have it written down. I forgot to ask it. I know our dollars are very, very limited. When we set aside funds for the summer and for intercession, those are dollars we're not doing other things with during the traditional year. And is there any way to speculate, I'm going to say speculate as opposed to measure, what we give up in order to try to gain? We give up course offerings, class size, other things by pulling the $3.2 million out of the general fund to fund the summer school. And yet, it has identifiable reasons. But do we look at the impact of one versus the other, ever?
It's been so long since we've had money. No, it's been so long since we've had funding for something like this. This is not something that we looked at this year. I can tell you that I think of the $3.2 million, Donna received 1.5, I received 1.7. Of the 1.7 that I received, we spent just shy of $1 million on the summer school program, which leaves the remainder of it for extended day. And I think that we need to go through the cycle. And I think we need to evaluate the benefits that we receive, not only from summer school, but also from extended day to be able to perhaps better respond to that question. But you're right. I mean, obviously, but there are a lot of reasons for why we do or don't offer particular programs during the school day. Class size certainly is something that has come up as a concern, other things as well. So you're right. You know, it's always competing interests. But I like this problem of being able to invest this money to support the kids in an extended day format.
Thank you. Thank you, Priscilla.
I have no questions. Thank you.
I hope we never, ever, ever, ever have to do without summer school again. I mean, I think that those years that we had to cut it was just detrimental, and it hurt the kids that were not able to participate. It's just an amazing program. Obviously, you can see, you know, you reported on how many kids took advantage of it. And that was when we threw it together, you know, quickly. So there's obviously a need out there. And I was, I know that Harris, where my grandson goes, they offered Jump Start this year. And I was so thrilled that I did not know if the other schools were offering it. And I just elated that to find out that all of them offered it because it is such a tremendous advantage for the kids that, for the sixth graders, the seventh graders coming in. They, you know, they're not spending those first few days of school wandering around, wondering where they go. You know, they can hit the ground running once they get to school. And so you're not wasting time. And it's, and like Carmen said, the kids have fun. They enjoy it. So I think it was Dr. Winlock that introduced that, you know, many years ago. And I think it was one of the best investments we've ever made. So that part, even, you know, if you don't go to summer school, if you don't go to summer school, if you get Jump Start, that, that's absolutely wonderful, great. But, so I hope we never, ever, ever, ever have to, to put it back on, on the back burner again. But excellent report, a definite need, and I hope we can continue to fund it forever, long after I'm gone, and gone, gone, and everything. So, thank you.
Okay. Is there any way we could get a breakdown by school, how many students took advantage of the summer school, and what courses they take? Oh, you have that? Okay, detailed. So, for the schools that did not have very much attendance or students attending, what was the issues through the surveys?
Well, I can tell you for the elementary schools, the schools that had very little attendance were very small schools. So, if you look at a Dillard or Pleasant Grove or Consummus River Elementary School, but proportionately, you know, even, even our smaller schools, if you had 37 students, you had three summer school classes. And so, that was, that was a pretty good turnout. But again, they were smaller schools.
And I would concur with what Ms. Cherry said. If you look at the size of the schools, you, you do have proportional attendance, but there is one outlier, and it's a good outlier. Our very largest secondary high school summer school was Pleasant Grove High School, which is a very large school, not our largest, but our very large school. And we had 558 students attend at Pleasant Grove. At Valley High School, we had 555 students attend. And obviously, that is wonderful, that students took advantage of that opportunity to either accelerate or to recover credits. So, but proportionally, everything looks relatively even.
Okay. My experience working for the Office of Family Planning, after-school programs, not only is a juvenile delinquent issue, it's also a teenage pregnancy issue. Okay. Number three, students served, you mentioned that, okay. Counselors, do they have actual contact with counselors, with maybe sit, sitting in with a counselor for maybe 20 minutes about their education, their test scores, and how, how capable they are, and how great they could be if they spend more time in school?
We did not assign a full-time counselor to summer school. Obviously, the sitting in and having those sorts of conversations occur during the school year. We did build counseling time into summer school. It was primarily for scheduling purposes-
Right.
-and for them to be present the first few days of school. But we did not have a counselor present the entire time.
Okay. Well, my experience working with, you know, with schoolchildren is that, you know, sometimes it just takes one counseling session telling them, hey, you have great, you know, grades, you have great test results, you just need to apply yourself, instead of hanging around with boys, with the girls, whatever. You did mention how many honors pre-AP classes. I like the middle school Jump Start. That's a good transition for students who are having the jitters to transition, as I know of, that I see you talking to these students. And study skills, you mentioned they do have study skills in those, in that type of setting. That's great. I like that very much. Now, do these summer students create ADA also during the summertime?
I'm looking at the expert, and the expert is saying no.
No, okay. Shoot. Okay. Trying to create some more monies, okay. Go Math, pre and post-testing, I really like that. What about night school? Is there any chance we might have like a night school? We could combine that with adult education? Or anybody experiment with that? With a four-high schools?
Actually, in, in the past, when we didn't have as much extended day dollars, adult ed would offer a, and, and tell me if I'm, I'm saying it correct, and correctly, but adult ed would actually sponsor a limited number of credit recovery courses. And they would work with the principals of the schools to look at the highest need courses. In other words, those that, that the most students needed to be able to pass to graduate. And so, we need to reevaluate this year with extended day, whether there still is a need for adult ed to step in and offer those courses.
At local high schools?
They were offered onsite at the high schools, yes.
Very good. What about having, is there a need for computer literacy in, in, in the elementary? Or are we doing anything about that arena and?
Absolutely. Most of our computer labs were open during that time, as well as utilizing the Chromebooks in the regular classroom. And in some cases, that was also some of the disguised learning that I talked about. But making sure that students are well-prepared for the assessments, as well as everyday instruction in computer technology.
And I also like the parent suggestions, in which they said that we need to support targeted groups, EL, low-income, and foster youth, and enrichment, tutoring. That's what I, I hear all the time in schools. And also, just recently, we just were notified, we had 2.9 million for schools for LCFF funding, but yet, we did not spend that money for low-income students and foster youth and English language learners. That monies, I'd like to have a, a meeting with, with possibly our committees or our board to discuss this issue, to maybe roll over that 2.9 million for the next summer classes for enrichment or whatever. So, let's put that on the table. Apparently, school council, I mean, school principals did not know, or were given guidance on the 2-point million dollars. So, it's there in a budget. You have excellent programs, models that you're doing for summer school. And we need to pump in that more monies for these type of students. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, I can, you can tell the consensus of the board is very positive about our efforts on summer school and the results from, and when I say summer school, I mean the whole thing, intercession and extended day, because I think that's an investment that you have shown really pays off, even with a short turnaround. And then, hopefully, this summer, with people able to make plans, to know that there'll be that opportunity. I think, to me, that would be one of the biggest challenges, not only just for the students, but for the, for securing teachers, because that knowledge of when it's going to occur is really important for them to make plans. I really like the enrichment and the disguised learning. I think that's key. I know Pleasant Grove Elementary had a whole summer session one time on bugs, and they had about 200, which about 150 were boys. So, but it was a very, very high-end curriculum on science, and yet, they didn't realize that, that they were, you know, so it was, it was really exciting to see. So, some of that flexibility on the enrichment part that you've allowed the, the sites to have. Jump Start, huge success, just a win-win for, I think, for conduct and as well as academics and getting students on, on track. So, excellent report, and I, just looks like it'll get better this year. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. We do not have any public hearing items, but we, so we'll go to discussion item on a revision to two board policies on Title I, to bring these up to date. And I'll call on Christina DeWaw, or maybe not. What about Sancha Lowery?
I couldn't wait. I, I told Christina she could stay home tonight, so I could say, good evening, President Cox, members of the board, Superintendent Hoffman, Ms. Heine. Tonight, the board is requested to receive and provide input to the first reading of the proposed board policy revision to 0520.2, as aligned with the California School Board Association. After a review of the existing board policy, it showed that our current board policy needed to be updated to reflect the current law. Several pieces of the law have been refined since our last update. The necessary changes are suggested to the following board policy in the 000 instruction series. Board Policy 020.2, Title I Improvement Districts. Any new or replacement language aligns with the California School Boards Association model policies.
Okay. And again, this is for Title I Program Improvement Schools, which is under federal guidelines. And there are two of them. And one of them is 0520.2, and one is 0520.3. Does everybody have the new and updated, updated versions?
No, no, I haven't.
Yeah.
So, just to clarify, 0520.2 is for our Title I PI schools, and the 0520.3 is our Title I for district.
One is schools and one is districts.
Correct.
And this is a, I don't know, an overview, I guess, for the board and for our new board, board member, Beth, Beth back there. Much of this may go away, because this is going to be, hopefully, in some point in this lifetime, going to be reauthorized by the federal government, because right now, it is a non-sustainable, non-workable program, but we have to go by the law in order to receive Title I funds. So, I think there's about, out of our 1,000 districts in California, there's about 600 that are in this situation of program improvement-
Yes.
-with probably any school that receives federal funding going to be in there-
Yes.
-this year.
Any school receiving-
So, it's not a sustainable program, but by law, we need to update the, the policies that pertain to it. So, that's just kind of my qualifier for this, the fact that it, we will be asked to look at these changes, but then probably in a year or two, it'll come back and it'll be a whole new, new policy.
Yeah, because I, I had the opportunity to sit in with Mark. I was part of this change.
Oh, good. I was going to ask which board buddy it was.
And I wanted to make changes better than this, right, Mark? He said, oh, we can't do that, Mr. Madison, it's the law. So, it's the law. So, it is. And as Ms. Cox indicated, this will change, maybe in the years to come. Some of these laws will be changed quite drastically. They need to be changed.
And the other piece is that almost every state, except California, has a waiver so that they don't have to do this. So-
That is correct.
-I don't know why California is not doing a waiver, but we aren't. So, this is one of those things that we do because we have to. So, any questions on any of it?
Yes. Okay. This paper that we received just now, these two papers, what's the difference between this and the, and the paper?
I think it's spelling out the acronyms, because I had asked about that. And I just said, because it's, some of the acronyms were not spelled out in, in any part of the, the document, I just asked for them to be spelled out. So, the second one is just spelling out.
Well, I don't have time to review this or, or vote on this issue right now, because I haven't clearly read this thoroughly.
It's not to be voted on tonight.
Okay. And what's the issue today? We're going to discuss this.
Yeah. So, we, all tonight is, is to present it, and if there are any questions, so, we'll come back at the next meeting.
Okay. Oh, I have some questions, though.
Okay.
Besides the California School Board Association, isn't there in other groups within the education communities that may give input?
CDE, California Department of Education.
And what's their, their recommendations?
That we need to comply with the current law and the current practices, which is included in the board policy.
They, they say that we should follow the California School Board Association?
That's correct.
And what about bilingual educational association? Or Teachers of English Language Learners? Or any other?
So, essentially, what this speaks to is the governing body-
Uh huh.
-that we would follow in, in terms of the pieces of the law that were refined, that we need to reflect in our current board policy.
Right.
So, bilingual ed doesn't really relate in this circumstance.
I mean, like, is there, there must be other organizations out there that could give input, or their, their suggestions. What I, well, the issue I have, seems like we only get one association dealing with these policies. So, I was wondering what other organizations are out there, or associations, what's their inputs? They might be positive, negative, but what's their, their issues regarding this? What's their, you know, what's their input?
This, this, this goes, Mr. Perez, I think, this is legislators. This is-
Right, correct.
-a federal. So, you could go to your body, legislators in, in California. But California didn't put in no exemption on this. We have to adhere to this.
Correct.
We didn't opt out of it as a state.
Right.
So, we're adhering to this.
But there's consultants out there who are advocating this or that, or associations that are advocating this, this or that. I'm just saying that a lot of times, when we get policy issues and presented to us, there's only one individual entity that we refer to. Ed Source, you know, is one of those. So, what does Ed Source say about this? Do they give input or consultation?
CSBA is, we subscribe to their policy division, that actually, we pay to get consultation on policies, because they have the legal staff and expertise to look up what the legislation makes us do, whether it's federal or state. And then, they have the department in CSBA that writes policy for school boards. And there may be other agencies out there. I know that one school district tried to go out to other agencies, and it cost them a fortune, and they didn't get accurate information. So-
Well, their issue-
It's, CSBA's, that's, that's what they, one of their biggest departments is on writing policy and helping guide. We don't have to do word-for-word what they say-
Right.
-but they have the legal part that we have to adhere to and the updates.
Also, like, you know, what does CTA say about this? Their input?
CTA's not a school board association.
Right.
And this is written for school boards.
They deal with children, and they might, you know, give input on these issues accord-
What we can do is, is, we can certainly look into that and come back if there's any other organizations. We're already paying for CSBA to do policy development with us. And they write it for school boards specifically, not for another organization.
We, our staff should be able to research that.
Okay. We'll bring, we'll bring some others back if there are any out there.
Mr. Perez, just another concept in this whole concept is, CTA and all the other organizations have impact before the legislation's completed. Most of this is interpretation and clarification of the actual legislation, put it into language that we can run our school district through. So, the, the time for feedback is in the process of the development of the laws and the pieces that we're actually now putting into our policy. So, it's, it's, the, the timing of what you're asking for is, is a different time. And it's, it's as these, as these laws and pieces are done, that's where we have our input. That's where AXA does their piece. That's where the different associations have their input. So, that, our job is doing that work during the legislative process to make sure those pieces are in place.
Yes, I understand. I agree with you 100%. But they're all also at, at the table when these are presented. They have their consultants at the table and giving their input and their interpretation, how they would affect their unions or the community. So, that's what, that's what I'm saying. I just want, if I'm going to get a, a piece of paper or a policy, I just don't want one particular input from one entity. I would like to see the pros and cons. That's what I'm saying.
Okay. I think we're going to go on now, and we will bring this back for next time. And thank you for making those just minor corrections as far as, as readability, I think, for board members on the, on the acronyms.
Thank you so much.
Okay. All right. Next, we have a Board Policy 3100. Mr. Fagan, this is-
I read those.
-a situation where we have a board policy on budget that a board member has requested the Finance Committee to look at. And one of the issues is that since the Finance Committee is a board committee, it has to be determined by the board, not by a single person, that the Finance Committee looks, reviews the policy-
Correct.
-as I understand it.
As part of the, the bylaws, the board can request that the committee do projects or do reviews. And in this case, Mr. Fortina asked for, would like the Finance Committee to take a look at our recently revised board policy for budget development and control. And I think, Mr. Fortina, I'll, I'll let him, it's something that he feels very strongly that the Finance Committee should review. And so, I'll let you take it from there.
Thank you. Yeah, it's quite simple. Our, our board, our Board Finance Committee has a myriad of responsibilities as defined in the Board, in Board Policy 3200, which we revised last year. But one of the components is that the board can use the Finance Committee as resource. We've had lots of discussion over the last two years with respect to the district's budget development policy. And Mr. Fagan and I, and Shannon, and, and Ms. Hargis, we, we've been working on the current policy. We've made, we've proposed a number of changes, which have gone, Rich, or will go to cabinet for review also.
Cabinets reviewed them.
And, and so, as an additional piece of, of information and input, would like to have that, the current policy, along with the proposed changes that have been made and gone to cabinet, go before the Finance Committee for their review and input to us- the Finance Committee for their review and input to us prior to the document coming back to the board for final approval.
Okay. Any questions or comments? I guess this would take a motion, then, for, is that in the bylaws that we need to move?
I think that would be the best way to go, yeah.
Okay. Because it is a board committee, so it's got to be done as a board. So any other questions or comments? Do I hear a motion?
I move acceptance of the request to have the Finance Committee review current and proposed changes to budget development and control policy.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded to have the Finance Committee review the Board Policy 3100, and then it will come back to the board. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Jeanette?
Oh, I did not.
Oh, you did? Okay. It's unanimous by all members present, then.
Good.
Next, we have item 16, no, 15, excuse me, approval of contract with California State University Sacramento. This is on our Career Pathway Trust.
Okay. Hello again this evening. I'm here before you now to ask that you review and approve a contract for services between California State University Sacramento and Elk Grove Unified School District, associated with our implementation of the California Career Pathway Trust grant. This is, I think, the fourth contract that I've brought forward for your review, associated with our grant. SacState will be one of our important community partners in the implementation of our grant, which we hold in collaboration with Sacramento City Unified School District. We are proposing to employ two faculty members on a part-time basis who will collaborate with our sector coaches and our academy and pathway lead teachers and coordinators to align curriculum and courses in order to facilitate secondary student transitions to higher education. The faculty champions will participate in regional, sector-based educational work groups, not only with our consortium for the Pathway Trust grant, but the consortium operated through the County Office of Education in Sacramento and Placer County. We hope to see increased development of articulation agreements or other pathway pipelines through the CSUS Accelerated College Entrance Program. The faculty champions that we are proposing to be funded through our grant would focus on the industry sectors of health and medical technology and information and communication technology. As you know, the overarching purpose of the Pathway Trust grant is to strengthen regional systems of support for college and career readiness. Do you have any questions?
Any questions?
I'll second.
I have a question.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded, discussion, Mr. Perez.
I like this whole concept, but yet I do not know what Sacramento City Unified School District is doing on their, if we're partners, what are they doing? How much money are they putting in? And where are they putting it in? It's a very good description that, what we're doing, but yet I don't see how we're working collaboratively. That's a big question I have. Like, I was wondering, is this a duplication of program that they're going to have at their side with the same amount of money?
As you might recall, I think I was here two weeks ago, we went over the contract with SacCity Unified that described the roles that each district would play. Collaboratively, we received a $6 million grant. Our other major partner is the Sacramento Employment Training Agency, and that was also a contract that I brought forth at our last meeting on November 4th. They're not, we're all putting resources into the grant. We've all received $6 million, and we are receiving services that will be used to serve students in both districts.
So that language or that contract that we did last year, we don't have to include that language in here?
Not last year, but two weeks ago, at the last meeting.
Or last meeting? What?
Yeah, at the last meeting. That was specifically regarding the roles and responsibilities of our relationship with our two major partners, who are SacCity Unified and SETA.
But how can we can't, I mean, why?
Are you asking for an overview of how the roles of all the partners align?
Yes. I mean, why isn't that written in the actual contract, you know?
Mr. Perez, we did have that contract last meeting, so it has been, and it has gone, we have gone over it.
Check your books you took home last.
No, no, no. But this is a different question. Why is it not that language in here, then, in this contract? Because we talked about we're having partnership, but we don't spell it out on this site, in this question.
Because the resources and services that we receive from each agency is different, so the language in each contract is specific to the services that we're receiving from that partner.
So we had to write a contract or just a contract just for Sacramento Unified School District? That's how you do it?
Unfortunately.
And then we just had to do it, an individual one just for what Elk Grove Unified?
Yes.
Okay, that's strange. That's strange. I never seen that because the federal government gave us a grant, right?
They gave us, they gave, Elk Grove is the, this is the state government, gave us a grant.
Right.
We're the fiduciary agent, and we have to subcontract with the partners with whom we applied for the funding, with whom we applied for the funding. And so each of those is a separate agreement, and we're slowly working through them. This is the two, three, fourth that I've brought forward. We have three or four more that I will be bringing forward in future meetings.
So we don't, we never discussed that contract language regarding that? We subcontract to these other agencies? We don't have to do that?
I'm sorry.
Each contract is separate, is what she's saying. We have the overarching funds, and then we contract with people to provide the specific services that they're going to provide. And we've already done that with SacCity, and this one is with California State University.
But, okay, but Elk Grove Unified School District is the overseer of the contract, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Of all the contracts.
Of all those, of the $6 million?
Yeah.
Right?
Of the $6 million and the resources and services that are being provided by all partners, the services that are being received by teachers and students in our district and SacCity Unified.
Okay, well, then, what I'd like to see, then, I'd like to have a brochure of those programs.
An overview of how it all goes together.
Right, okay, exactly. Because this is the first time that I ever seen, well, Department of Health Services, where I contracted with other agencies or whatever, it was, the process is a little bit different, okay? That's all I'm seeing.
Okay.
And make it more clear to me if you had a book.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to approve the contract, unless you have your question? Okay. For services between CSUS and Elk Grove School District. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Abstain? Motion is passed by all members present. Thank you. And it looks like you're up for a couple more. The next ed contract is postponed, and that will be another contract that we will, from this same grant. And 16A is to approve the district's Career Technical Education Advisory Committee and community stakeholders. And that's you.
All right. So, yes.
It's postponed until next time.
Why?
It's postponed. That's why I'm in the.
Any particular reason, why?
Well, she'll tell us next meeting.
Okay.
Okay. So, switching gears, I no longer have on my CPT hat. I have on my FPM hat, my Federal Program Monitoring hat. One of the requirements of the federal compliance review that we are currently in the process of going through for a number of our programs, but in particular, our Career Technical Education Program, is that our governing board review and approve the composition of our Career Technical Education Advisory Committee. In addition to our numerous program, our numerous specific program-level advisory committees that we have at our school sites, we also have a robust group of stakeholders, as many of you know, who provide input about the direction of career technical education district-wide. For the past year and a half, the focus has been on guiding the development and initial implementation of our Link Learning Program. So in addition to our Link Learning work, however, our Career Technical Education stakeholders also can provide recommendations on the program and the composition of our program and serve as a liaison between the district and potential employers and higher education. The committee needs to be a diverse, robust committee with a variety of perspectives as prescribed in state and federal law. And as you know, our advisor group is very diverse and includes not only business people, but representatives from the public sector, parent groups, higher education, school sites, district office, our teachers' union, you name it. So what I'm bringing forth tonight is the list of members of all community and business partners who have participated in the last year and a half. Up to September, we had our last community stakeholder meeting in September. And so you've got a pretty hefty list there, and I'm asking you to review it and approve it so we can include it in our compliance audit.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Just a quick question, because there are some people who are no longer with the district, so I assume those names will be either taken off or updated.
Yes, yes, yes. This is, like I said, through September, and I think I first submitted this as a board item.
So as of the time it was current? Okay. That's, any, I don't think there's any questions or comments, so I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Abstain? Motion is carried. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Jeanette and Priscilla, thank you. Au revoir. And I know we'll be seeing you in other capacities.
Thank you. We're really getting to extended here. Okay, item seven.
I'll come here whenever you want.
Item 17 is Mr., or Superintendent Hoffman, excuse me, establishment of our annual organization meeting.
So the December 9th meeting will be the opportunity for the board to select its leadership and do its organizational meeting. We actually have here a recommendation of a 6:00 PM start. Since we will be having two new members join us, conversation started around the thought process of changing it to a 5:00 start so that we could do a swearing-in of the new members and then have a little opportunity for, if they have family here, to be able to do a little opportunity to spend time there and then go into an abbreviated closed session before then going into our open session. The other option is to do, to go straight into an open session and then leave closed session afterwards, so people that are here aren't having to wait for us to go back into closed session. So that was the opportunity for the board to discuss the concept.
Well, for those three of you that are going to be here, what would you like to do?
Well.
I'd go first.
All right. I suppose, first of all, and I'm sure you've already done it, does it work for our new members to be here at 5:00? That's important to know.
One?
One.
Crystal? Yep, okay.
Two. And is there an impact on bargaining units for a 5:00 start time?
We have a council that's been modified, so I know these will probably be here today. We have no conflict until November.
Okay.
Leave early.
I try.
I would like, I would prefer if we can, get started early, as possible. I think 5:00, 5:30, and then start the meeting, and they can still mingle with their relatives.
Yeah, does 5:30 work as a compromise?
Then you wouldn't have a closed session.
5:30?
Yeah.
So no closed session until after the meeting?
If we need a closed session.
Yeah.
So, okay, so what we do need on this, then, is a motion to approve the, it would be an amended, it would be to start at 5:30 instead of 6:00, right?
Right.
5:30 PM on December 9th.
Okay, well, if you want one, I move that the start time for the December 9th meeting be 5:30 for the general meeting.
I'll second it.
And it will establish the organizational meeting. Okay. All of the above. All right. It's been moved and seconded to establish the organizational meeting in Board of Education for 5:30 PM Tuesday, December 9th, 2014, in the boardroom of the district office. All those in favor?
I have a question.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, what's your question?
What, you mentioned we might have a closed session?
If we do need one, it would be after the meeting.
It'll be after the meeting.
And what would be on the closed session agenda?
We don't know yet, because the agenda's still being done.
But might be. We don't know.
You never know until just before, because things are being.
We don't know what it will be yet.
Cut it out.
Okay.
Did you vote yea or nay?
Yeah.
Yes, okay. It's unanimous by all members present. Okay, next item is.
Excuse me?
Oops, sorry.
Before we go on?
Yes. Trying to get done before 10?
All right, yeah, I can hold my, I could, I hold my comment until we deal with future agenda items, but in terms, if you want, okay, I can do it then.
Okay. Because then we can get our action items done before 10. Item 18 is our high school course catalog and college career planning guide, and our middle school course catalog, and our alternative education course catalog.
I will be extremely brief. Good evening, President Cox, members of the board. Welcome, Superintendent Hoffman, Ms. Hein. For the last board meeting on November 4th, the Board of Education received the three course catalogs, the comprehensive high school course catalog, the alternative ed course catalog, and the middle school course catalog. The board is requested to take action this evening to adopt all three of those catalogs for the 2015-16 school year.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt the three course catalogs for high school, middle school, and alternative education. Question?
Who's doing the printing?
So for the English and Spanish catalogs, we outsource those because of the machinery that's required for that on a web press that our internal print shop services does not have. The Mung catalog will be done in-house because that is smaller quantities. And the middle school catalog.
And the alternative catalog.
Okay.
Okay.
So it's been moved and seconded to approve the three course catalogs. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Abstain? All members present unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And Ms. Lowry, we have revisions to board policy 6174, education for English language learners, and we did receive a B.C. to answer some of the questions from our last meeting on this, from both.
Thank you so much.
Okay, let me find it.
So, good evening once again. Thanks for having me back up. The board is requested to approve the proposed board policy revision of 6174, education for English learners, as aligned with the California School Board Association. As I stated last time, all language in this BP is consistent with the updates from CSBA, thus ensuring that our policies here in EGUSD remain consistent with the policies recommended by CSBA and strongly adheres to the California Education Code, the Code of Regulations, the United States Code, and case law resulting from court decisions regarding English learners. So I respectfully ask.
And as I said, we did receive a board communication that answered the questions that were brought up at the last meeting and clarified that, but it resulted in no changes to the board policy.
Absolutely.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the board policy 6174, education for English language learners?
I have a question.
Okay.
Does the California School Board, no, California School, I mean Superintendent Association have input on this issue?
Prior to when the law is being passed, but not during the actual policy.
They write policy, right? They suggest.
He said it was prior to the law being passed.
In the development process of the law, that's where the input happens. This is, we're using CSBA as the organization to give us the interpretation and put the law into usable language at the school setting, because as, if you read through laws, if we tried to follow them as written, they'd be difficult to do. So this is an interpretation for how we do our work, how you do your work as a board in setting policy, which sets our direction as staff. So it's all done ahead of it. It's done in the process, not in this policy writing at the district level.
Before the law is written, that's when they have the input.
So, did they give input?
Before the law was passed.
They did?
That's, AXA gives input before the law. Does, AXA gave, gives input before the law was made?
No, I'm talking about the California School, I mean Superintendent Association, did they give input?
That's AXA.
AXA, okay. They did?
I can't speak to what AXA did on this specific issue word for word. What I can say is though, as the process works, AXA, CTA, the other associations, during the legislative process, that's when you have impact in the legislation. This is simply, the legislation's already the law. This is simply how it's going to be, what it means for school districts. And CSBA is the recommended authority in doing that work.
Okay, the, been moved and seconded? Right?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm kind of losing. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain? You're opposing it?
Yes.
Okay.
Because of the fact that I don't think that the local community did not give input or on this issue.
Okay, so the, the vote is five in favor and one opposed and one absent. Mr. Perez is the no vote. Do you get that? Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Lowry. I'm going to move to the consent agenda because it's getting to that hour that we're supposed to finish our action items. And I will go ahead and read the consent agenda. It was requested by Mr. Fortina to pull item 25. I think it's an A and B if I'm not, and so that one I will pull, and we have a blue card on that too. And I think Ms. Superintendent Hoffman has some comments on it. So the consent agenda reads as follows, 20, approval of minutes, 21, personnel actions, 22, purchase order approval, 23, warrant register approval, 24, investment policy, 26, acceptance of gifts, 27, ratifications of contracts, 28, ratification of non-public schools, non-public agency contracts, 29, renewal of student teaching agreement between Elk Grove Unified School District and the University of Pacific. Item 30, instructional materials adoption. Item 31, out-of-state field trip approval, and item 32, 2014 fencing at Laguna Creek High School, acceptance and notice of completion.
Ms. Chairman?
I'll move the item minus item number 25.
I'd like to pull item 29, please.
Item 29 we will discuss. So the consent agenda, you are approving those, Ms. Almaviska, except for item 25, A, B, and 29?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain. It is passed as unanimous by all members present. Okay, on item 25, A and B, that is on obsolete and surplus property, Ms. Clifford? Or wait, I'll let Mr. Superintendent bring that up in case it answers your question.
So we did check in based on the question by Mr. Fortina, and we did do a check just to make sure the vehicles we were talking about, and both vehicles we're talking about are currently out of use. They're not, they're not in the cycle that we're using for servicing our schools. This currently through the process. Do want to note that we do have a number of vehicles that are reaching the end of their life, so there may be come a time in the near future, we will need to purchase additional vehicles, but these two are obsolete and it's not going to lead directly to additional purchases with these two vehicles being taken out of service.
What about 25B? Which is two more vehicles?
Total of four?
There's a total of four.
Yeah, all, all the vehicles, all these vehicles are, are out of service currently. We confirmed that today.
I, I know the hour is late and my itis is acting up, so I promise not to wax poetic on this. But by way of a little history for Superintendent Hoffman, AFSMI used to have nine officers who worked in the Department of Police Services who drove at four, nine of those vehicles. They were all laid off in 2010, and we've only got four back right now, and they're not assigned to the department. There's some controversy about school safety, and we're actively engaged in it because, well, because one, nine of the, of the original 13 staff used to be ours. Now we're down to four sergeants. So my question is, and I, I'm not sure I heard correctly, did, did I hear you to say that all four of these vehicles have been, are pulled and will not be replaced? Or that they're pulled and will be replaced?
There were, there were two vehicles that were in the budget previously, and to make sure I'm speaking correctly, Mr. Fagan, there were two, two of the four were already in the budget and those pieces, those vehicles were taken care of. So the two I was speaking to that are, that are actually being take out, taken out now will not, are not scheduled for an automatic replacement. So this doesn't mean that those vehicles will be replaced. That would have to go back through the budget cycle with an opportunity for the board to take action to move forward on another set of vehicles if we were going to do that. So these, but these four vehicles currently are not being used in the current daily servicing of our schools.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. But the two that, that are not completely scrapped, somebody was driving those vehicles. Do we, do we know whether that was district staff or one of the school resource officers? And, and if they're not driving them now, what are they driving? And how many, how many vehicles are in the fleet? It used to be quite a large operation and it's not now, and we've always wondered what happened to the vehicles, and this is our opportunity to ask those questions. So if either Ms. Dew or Mr. Fagan could talk with us about it, we'd appreciate it.
I'm interested in how many vehicles there are right now.
That's not the, the question tonight, though, is more just disposing of obsolete property.
These four are currently not being used.
Right.
So the current operations will continue. At some point, other vehicles that they are using now will not be suitable, so they will have to be.
But that's not tonight.
That's not these.
Yes.
So at some point in the future, that when other vehicles become unusable, the question was not asked prior to this on the level of vehicles, but we can certainly put together that list. I mean, they're assets, so we have an asset listing of them, so we could, we could get that from the board.
Okay.
Okay, I'm going to ask questions.
On me?
Yes, please. And I, because I just, and some of it's going to be redundant, I just want to have everything The two vehicles that are quote currently in the budget are, are, they're in the 2415, are they're in, they're in the 2013-14 school year budget.
Those were approved for the second interim of 2013.
And, and that, and that constitutes, that example constitutes one of the problems I have with our budget development process in that, in that the, there was never a discussion about the need of vehicles because of the way in which this Board of Education addresses the budget issue. They give tasks, we give tacit approval to the entire budget, the 12 funds, even though we have no knowledge of what is in those 12 funds. So, but those two vehicles were approved for 1314, still have not gone out on RFP because, and, and the reason this whole issue was important to me is we had an understanding there were going to be no actions relative to police services until the study was complete. And we have not even begun the study formally.
Let me sit by and clarify. Those vehicles were purchased in 2013-14. They're probably already out and being used.
Oh, they.
So two of the ones going away now have been replaced by those. It takes about six months to get the vehicle in and with all the computer equipment put in and up lights, decals and stuff. So two of these are related, more than likely directly related to those two that we did purchase last year. There were two on the priority list for this year that.
That got pulled.
So there is no budget for this year. Those two that we were approved last year are in service at this time. It, it just takes a while to get them on. So I think that we, other than the initial concerns that you had when you joined the board and the process and where that was as, as you came on as the board, these might have, those two last year might have been part of that process. But the board actually somewhere along the line did approve those and not sure the timing of when, you know, you might have come on the board. But we, we don't go out and buy stuff without board approval, and it was listed specifically at second interim as a change from first interim to second interim last year. So those two went through that process. The two this year, when they were pulled, we've held all requests to, for anything related to those two vehicles for this year because they weren't part of the budget. So it, it is working now that we've, we've gone through that first budget cycle, and I think Mr. Hoffman said it clear that as we look at a, at a budget cycle, notwithstanding the other review that the board's doing regarding police services itself, that if, at that point in time, there's a request from police services for two or whatever number of vehicles that might be, we would put it on the list for the board to consider approving or not approving, just like we do with all the other budget priorities. So does that help a little bit?
That helps, thank you.
Okay.
I will move.
I have a question.
Okay.
What, what funds did you use to purchase these vehicles?
General fund, unrestricted general fund.
Under what category, under general funds?
I don't know what you mean.
Did you use LCFF monies?
Well, all of the unrestricted general fund money is LCFF, so, yeah.
All of it?
Yep.
For new cars?
Base supplemental, base sub, base grant, supplemental, and concentration. But it's, we don't identify a specific portion of the LCFF. It's all part of one large pot.
One large pot.
Yep.
Yeah, I just have a quick suggestion, and this may not have been directed, be directed at you. But just a thought for my colleagues, there are, as Nancy Clifford mentioned, there are four safety officers out there, and at one point, that used to be one department. I would put it on the table and make the suggestion that perhaps these, these tools that we have in our possession would, and possibly be explored in providing for these particular officers, certainly leveraging limited resources and providing an opportunity for them to cover more than the schools that they provide. I hope that as a part of the discussion in reorganizing the police department, we would achieve a, at some point where there will be a joint department that would include these officers. And I, and I see this as an opportunity to provide resources for, for those folks that are out in the field. So just a thought, I want to put it on the table. I know that's in development, but, you know, maybe we should be so quick to get rid of these. My, my vehicle outside is 250,000 miles and I haven't gotten rid of it, so.
I just would think that they're obsolete means they're obsolete and not safe, so I don't want to put people in unsafe vehicles.
Stop driving my vehicle.
Yeah. You shouldn't be in an unsafe vehicle either. I, I don't want to be responsible or liable for people being in unsafe vehicles, so that would be.
I, I move that we approve item number 25, A and B of the action agenda.
Been moved and seconded. Yes, I'll take a roll call vote on a disposing of unsafe vehicles or obsolete vehicles. Mr. Fortina?
Yes.
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 Are we, does somebody say our names? A, yes.
Yes.
Okay, it's unanimous. Thank you. And then you had item 29 on the renewal of student teaching agreement between Elk Grove Unified and the University of Pacific?
Yes. I'm concerned, we have come across a lot of these agreements all the way back east for student teachers, and I was wondering, how many of these agreements do we have with the universities within Elk Grove Unified School District?
We have about 13 different agreements, but I'm happy to provide a list for you.
Yes, please.
I was fortunate to be here in 2009 when we extended this agreement before, and so this is just a request to extend the student teaching agreement we have with University of Pacific for the next five years.
And how many of these teachers transition to full-time positions?
I could get you the information on that. I know that in the past, we hired, the student teachers that were teaching in the hard-to-fill areas of math and science, all got offered positions here in Elk Grove Unified School District.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Would you like to move the item?
Yes, I'll move.
It's been moved and seconded to renew the student teaching agreement between EGUSD and the UOP. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Motion carried unanimously. We'll go back to the board member reports. I think we're done with action items, but we had said at our last meeting that we were going to make comments on our community meetings, and then at that time, we could post the summaries of those meetings. So also, Mr. Fortina, Mr. Lee, and I attended a two-by-two, I guess it was really more a three-by-one with the mayor of, and Mr. Pierce, mayor of Elk Grove, and talked about their interest in us supporting them in building an aquatic, aquatic facility. And Mr. Fortina, I don't know if you wanted to summarize or if you want me to or?
Okay, I, I thought it was a wonderful meeting between the board, superintendent, and the school district. And, and I have to say, and I'll say it publicly, and I'll look at you when I say it, that, that the questions you asked and your behaviors at that meeting gave me great hope that we are going to establish the kind of respect between the school district and the city that I believe has been lacking for a long time. And I thank you. It was a wonderful meeting. I think all parties listened to each other. All parties heard what each other said, and we, and we left that meeting, I, I felt with that demonstration of mutual respect for, for each group. The city and the district working together can benefit our students and the community in so many ways, and so I'm encouraged for the future, and thank you.
Yeah, one thing I'll have to add is that Mr. Lee had to sit in the middle because he's going to be, he's going to be a city council member and kind of be an advocate for us too. So, so that was kind of like a two and a half to one and a half, I guess. But, yeah, so it was good to have him hear that from both, both perspectives. But at some point, the city would be interested in working with us on developing some joint-use athletic facilities, and it would be kind of a, more of a future thing as we develop our master plan, and they want to be part of our master plan development or be included in that. So Mr. Pierce was really, really helpful with that, as he always is. And then from our community board meetings, just if there were any highlights that you would like to bring out, that, I know we had a great report on these, and, and I also asked Ms. Almaviska to make a few, if you wanted to make a statement or not.
Hold on, I have some questions regarding this meeting you had with the city.
Okay.
Can you give me some history how this evolved?
The meeting or the, the topic?
Yes, the, regarding the aqua, the aquatic center.
Oh, the aquatic center.
Yes. Who met with them prior to this last meeting?
Mr. Pierce has been meeting with them for two years, correct, on this particular item. He's been meeting with them on a lot of items, but this particular one is about a two-year-old one that they have been very excited about developing this facility, but would like the school district to be, if we wanted to be part of it, they wanted a conversation with us on it. So we received a letter from them, and I think you, you received, and then we decided to take the next step of doing two-by-two to kind of sit down and tell them where we were at financially, where the, and hear from them what their ideas were. And with that sharing, we were able to come up with something that we're going to involve them in our master plan development as we move forward, so.
And what kind of financial commitment are we, are you talking about?
We didn't make any, we are not, we didn't meet as a board, we met as, as two, two-plus board members, so it's discussion. It was no commitment. If it, if, as Mr. Pierce brings up, master plan, it will be part of a board discussion.
Well, what I read in the paper, it said that we were going to commit, he, the mayor wanted us to commit to examine.
They did, but that, that has changed.
And was that what?
That has changed.
Did you get the B C on it?
There, yeah, there was a board communications sent on.
Correct.
But I would prefer it be on an agenda item where the board can discuss it was part of the master plan because it's not on the agenda tonight.
So are we as a board going to do this master plan, talk about possible priorities like possibly an auditorium maybe for our graduation class for 2017, which the Arco Arena is going to be closing? So are we going to be?
There's going to be a new one.
Right.
You know what? It's really late tonight, so that, that's.
like possibly an auditorium, maybe for our graduation class for 2017, which the Arco Arena is gonna be closing, so are we gonna be?
There's gonna be a new one.
Right.
You know what? It's really late tonight, so that's gonna be another agenda item on the master plan, and I'd rather save it for then when, when it's on the agenda, because we don't have it on the agenda tonight. And I did ask Ms. Amavisca if she might, if she wanted to say anything after her 33 years. And then, and then we can go to the community meetings. Either one. Okay, do the commu-, all right, commu-, start your community meeting. Yeah. Go ahead, Jeanette, on the community meeting.
All right, so I will start. First of all, I wanna thank Rich for having the amended minutes provided, as it kinda looked like we didn't do much at the meeting, but the new minutes are very, very well, very well done. But first of all, we had the Jazz Band from Monterey Trail High that started our meeting, that it played while people entered, and then they, they sang the National Anthem after we did the pledge, and that was very, very nice, and they did an excellent job. And then, once we did the Service Learning Award, like everybody did, it was really nice because we had, she brought her, she, her class won, the teacher won for, for what she, with her and her class were doing, and she brought her kids that participated in that, and so they came and took a picture, and, and so that was really nice. Then, we had the general, the regular meeting, like everybody did. One of the things that I thought was really nice that came out of our questions was that the vice principal from Monterey Trail was there, and he was talking about the Google SBAC, Smarter Balance Assessment Consortium, that's a website, and that parents can go on and take a, a practice test at, for any grade level. And so, I know we were, I asked the person that was there regarding the Common Core, excuse me, that's what I, I guess I'm getting tired, to put that on our website, so I hope that's going to be done. Rich, did you follow up on that? Because I think that, that is an excellent thing, and it'll answer a lot of questions that parents may have about the Common Core. So, basically, that was my meeting, it was, I think, probably not any different than the rest of yours, so. They were all a little different, okay. It was, it was an excellent meeting, so.
Well, I just wanna say we had an awesome meeting, Donna and I. I think the most important part is being present in the community and actually connecting with folks who came out. That seemed to be probably the value in this, and the conversation that really was meaningful for me was after the actual meeting. You know, for the most part, it's pretty standard, all the hard questions I gave to Donna, and so she took care of all that, and, you know, I, you know, I certainly played a little role in it, but I think being present in the community and, you know, talking directly to the parents was really what I got out of it. I took a look, a look at the, the minutes, and it was, it was very good. It captured the, the essence of what was discussed, so I, I think, you know, I'm fine with it being posted, so. Thank you, Donna.
I think, at, at my meeting, we didn't have a great turnout with parents. I think throughout the district, perhaps the World Series, the Giants and Kansas City had kind of effect on it. I guess I'm trying to make an excuse a little bit, but didn't have a lot of, but the positive part that I got an opportunity to have a lot of good cross-discussion with our staff and people that work hard out in the field every day, and asked a lot of good questions. The EL population, the foster youth was a major concern. People of color, the impoverished area that, that we're in, in the Valley Region, hunger came up as an issue, kids coming to school hungry, things that we need to address. Rio Casadero brought that up. Homework, it was a discussion on the homework versus the Common Core. The homework, it's not nearly as impacted like it was before, with lots and lots of papers. Now, you have two, two questions that they give kids, and it's very challenging, and it's taken them a good while to do it, just with those two questions. And I also wanna thank Ms. Penna was with me there, and we had a good time that night. Thank you. And I do think it's, it's good to go out to the community. I think it's, it's a wonderful thing, as Mr. Lee indicated. It's, it's a good thing.
Thank you, I'll make mine short. As with last year's community meeting, this community meeting maintains my belief in the value of providing opportunities for inclusion. It's through inclusion that we can, can have interaction with all stakeholders. That's how we will grow, that's how they will grow, and, and I look forward to more community meetings as we go forward.
We also had a good meeting, Mr. Pierce, thank you, and his fellow staff that were there. I agree with you, Board, Board, Forcina, trustee Forcina, yes, it's very important that we get out there, and somebody mentioned that, that we, maybe we need to go to the school sites and actually have the meetings, and I agree with that, and I was wondering if we could have a budget to do that, because a lot of these working parents, you know, they don't like to, you know, dress up or go out after work, or, you know, because of the Giants or whatever, and so maybe we need to go to the actual school sites and have these meetings versus one place for the whole region that we represent. And again, we got excellent input from a variety of people at the meeting. We had 40 students, government class, a lot of students were engaged in conversation regarding issues about equality of funding, AP courses, sports, college readiness, et cetera, et cetera. Also, faculty were concerned about, what's the word that they used, Mr. Pierce, when the, when the school is overcrowded and they get students, offloading. We had an issue regarding offloading at Anthony Elementary, and I've been researching that recently, and it could be because of this US border issue. I've been studying this issue, and I went to UC Davis and talked to some professors about it, and, and they said, yes, your school could be impacted like Los Angeles and other schools throughout California, and I asked about federal funding, there is none, or they're researching that issue. And so, I'm wondering, about, still wondering or studying this issue regarding these offloading situations of these students, and we need to go to school and do a survey if these kids that are coming into our schools today are from that populace that are affecting our US borders and they're resettling California and coming to our schools. Other than that, we talked about financial aid, they're interested in, in careers and college awareness programs, they wanna participate in college orientation, and so, so bottom line, it was a productive meeting. Next time, I also, I'd like to have some prior prep, like a list of this parent meeting, I mean, committee members, so I could personally call them, which I did last year. I think, I forgot to call them, I was so busy campaigning and watching the Giants, but we need to do some phone calling. That's how I got a little bit more people last year than we did this year, but overall, it was a good meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, and just to recap a little bit on, on my meeting, I wanted to thank Ms., Mrs. Albiani for bringing her Girl Scout troop to lead us in the pledge, and also, I just wanted to tell, share with the board, we had a, Service Learning Champions were from Pleasant Grove High, and they were foster youth that not only provide reading programs for elementary students, but they also, by doing that and presenting them, have increased their reading levels and, and their academic achievement. It's a really neat program. Each of the students came, five of the students, and they each brought a book for their feeder elementary schools that they had selected. But, one of the things with our service learning, this was brought up at one of our meetings about sustainability of grants, we had a six-year service learning grant that expired about three years, three years ago, and it's still going strong thanks to our curriculum department and Ray Peterson that heads that, and we have a lot of community partners that actually were judges for the Service Learning Award. So, I wanted to say that that's one grant that we were able to sustain, sustain without, without the additional funding, even though it isn't, you know, as widespread as it was. We are one of the districts that are really key in providing service learning for our students. And then, the other things that came up during the meeting, thank you, Mr. Sarudi for being there and, and for your, your help in that presentation, but the, the comments on what, for LCAP, on what we've done as a board, were very positive, especially for summer school, after-school programs, and preschool, and gate, so those things were very positively received. The needs that were brought up were lower class sizes at the high school level and to increase number of counselors, so it was, it was good, really good to be out and back at, at Pleasant Grove Elementary and always a friendly group, and like you mentioned, even after the meeting, it was, there was a lot of good interaction with people that were there. So, appreciate everyone and all the hard work that went into setting that up. I think Tori was part of that, a big part of that, so thank you, Tori. And now, did you have some comments?
Well, I, I forgot to mention something, that Crystal came to my meeting too, so, and I thank you for that, Crystal. She sat in on it and said now she knows, and she'll be all prepared to take, to do it, to do it next year. Well, I had, I, I started writing some notes, and I made some notes, and I thought I didn't get to say them earlier than, so I'll probably rephrase it and save a lot of them for my reception that I'm having on January 21st, 15th, excuse me, so mark your calendars. But it was, it was really tough because I was, every time I would write and I would, and I, I don't cry, I'm one of those people, I just, I never, never, ever cry, but I was writing and, and I didn't get very far, so I don't have a whole lot to say here without crying, okay? I do, one thing that, you know, I've been here a long time, and, and since 1981, and there's so much has changed in this district. I mean, I have seen all the change from, since 1981, and mostly good things, mostly really, really good, exciting things, some not so good, and some of the changes, you know, the jury's still out, so I will, I'm not leaving, I'm not going away. I'm, I'm still gonna be living here in the district, and, and I'm gonna keep watching. My grandson's going to the school, and I'm gonna keep my eye on this board, and I will keep my, my comments will not be kept to myself. Maybe I can speak to y'all from the other side of the podium over there. That, the thing that, that, it is the closest thing to me that I'm really gonna miss is, I've made so many friends here, and, and here I go. So many friends across the, along the years, and, and many friends that have become like family to me, and I'm gonna miss seeing those on a regular basis, although those who I've, a lot of my friends, I'm still gonna remain friends with them, we're gonna stay close. I wanna thank all of you guys here for helping me all these years, but I know I've made, had phone calls to each of you, every single one of you, I think, you know, at one time or another, and you've really helped me a lot, and you've always been there to answer my questions, and I just, I thank you all for being my friend, you know? I don't feel like we're colleagues, I feel like we're all friends, and so, I still got your emails, and I'll stay in touch, but mark your calendars for January 15th. And it's at Monterey Trail, yes, and so, was it 4:30 to 6:30, so you'll get, you'll get, you'll get an invite. Maybe I won't invite you, huh? No, you'll get an invite. But, anyway, that's it. Your turn, Priscilla.
Oh, no, I'm, I just thank you for your years, for the 33 years, and we'll thank you more on January 15th too, and it's late, and I'll reserve my comments for December 5th.
Oh, no, 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 you gotta say something.
Well, I just echo, being able to work with some remarkable people, and then the long time with Chet and Jeanette, who still inspire me with their heart for kids, and all, each and every one of you out here has been instrumental in, in making this journey very exciting, productive, and, and just thankful that we have each of you, so I do have longer, not longer, but more to save it, I'll, I'll save it for then. Yeah, so, and you had another item?
Oh, yeah, now I have three items.
Okay.
I'll make them quick. First, when we talked about the community meetings, you had indicated earlier that something was gonna be addressed that I brought up. Will the minutes be publicized on the website?
Arlene, is the, the summary for the community board meeting, there is a summary out here that we can pub, put on the website.
Okay, I mean, I haven't looked, but somebody had mentioned that they'd been looking for-
We wanna make sure, once, once this is done.
Yeah, after this is done.
After this is done, then we'll go.
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine. Two, I just need a clarification on the, on the board meeting of December 9th and the short adjournment for family. Will that include a cake or something where we can say, "Welcome to the district"?
I'm sure we can, I'm sure we can arrange some cake.
I'll pay for it myself if, if it comes to that, to recognize new people, because we certainly weren't recognized when we came on the board, and I think that's important. Then, the third thing, is it appropriate to ask for an agenda item, to have an agenda item for December 9th, so that we as a board can discuss the process of filling Mr. Lee's seat?
I think that's, that's gonna be on the, yeah.
It'll be, it'll, okay.
Yeah, that'll absolutely be on the agenda.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, and I think that we're going to adjourn the meeting finally. I guess we just had to hang on, Jeanette, for the longest meeting ever. Thank you all.
You know, I think Roy wanted to get a picture of, of Beth and Crystal and Priscilla and I.